Hi, everybody. Happy, happy Monday. Sorry to interrupt your chit chats and catch up, but we have a really exciting two things to talk about during our workshop. Today is July fourteenth, 2025. So we're going to kick off. We have a workshop with the Library Expansion Committee as well as the Cumberland Historical Society. Thank you all so much for being here on this beautiful July after evening, rather. I was hoping I could in partune on our amazing library director, Ms. Stacy Mazer, to come on up. We're going to do thirty minutes talking about the library expansion, and then we're going to pivot to the Historical Society at six thirty. So we'll start off with Stacy, Stacy, if that works.
Do you mind if I bring Bert with me?
You can bring anyone up that you want to.
It's going to be my emotional support committee member. Okay, so you're curious about our current situation with the Expansion Committee and expansion in general. So we are basically at the junction of we're really pausing things while we get through the next three years of the strategic plan. And that's mainly because the strategic plan lays out a framework for us to really assess our current building and then go to our community and ask what our community might be interested in. And then maybe in that third year, start to re-envision or reimagine what any sort of new building might look like. So that's, that's sort of our current plan. Over the last year, the Expansion Committee has been meeting. They've been reviewing all of that past documentation that was created from 2019 till about 2020, when the previous Expansion Committee worked. And from all of those meetings, we really decided that we needed to go back to the, to the community again. And so that's why we did that community survey and why we drafted a new plan so that we really would have a roadmap as to what our next steps might be. Any questions so far? So I can take a breath.
Take two breaths. I was just wondering, because we have some new counselors up here, and I actually wasn't here when the initial Library Expansion Committee. So I was hoping you might be able to give us just a short little history lesson on the initial creation of that committee and its goals.
Yes, so the initial creation of the committee was to address the needs of the Historical Society, who they were in a building that was going to basically be, I think it was going to be either sold or needed to be moved, because the land on it was going to be sold. One of the two things was happening. And so Bill Shane at the time, the idea was that they would move the Historical Society, renovate it, and basically give them a new home. The, the library's plot was identified as a good place for that, as having sort of a community complex of cultural-related buildings all in one place. So it's sort of a natural marrying of, of two really great institutions within our town, learning about the historical past of our library. And we do also have a strong history of doing archival work within the library itself. So the, the Expansion Committee was created because the advisory board had some concerns about moving the Historical Society building without any sort of plan in place that would allow the library, if it needed to, expand its footprint. So things slowed down a little bit, and the Expansion Committee met with Scott Simon's architect to sort of start a very early process of how can we get these two buildings together in a way that, that benefits both and then will also benefit the town. The one concept idea that I liked a lot was the big house, little house, little house that was often brought up. And that's, you know, that really cool New England vibe of that you tack on a new structure every time you add new family. And so I think that was sort of the idea they had in mind when they first conceptualized that library and Historical Society expansion. So all that happened. The building got moved, which apparently also took a lot of work in moving wires and running it down the hill, down the road, and then COVID hit. So, and I think COVID basically kind of made everything pause a lot. And then it just never really got picked back up for a while. And then in 2024, the town council basically restarted a new Expansion Committee with members of the old committee. We have some of them here today. And then some new folks as well to sort of relook at those old plans and say, is this where we want to be? Is this what we still need? Or what else might need to change? Do we need to start fundraising immediately? Or do we need to relook at things? So it was just sort of trying to answer all those questions to, to figure out what the next steps would be.
Hi, I'm Bert Kendall, chairman of the Expansion Committee. We thank you for having us here. I know your agenda is busy. We thank Matt Sturgis for his enthusiasm. We have, four of our members are here tonight. Bill Stiles, Shirley, Story King, Tom Foley, and Jen Griffin, Gifford. That was our, our presentation. With me tonight, of course, is Steve and Stacy, who has already started and given you some history. The original phase, which she's talked about, produced quite a plan. The town spent considerable funds on it, and it was an architect's rendition of the, the whole library connector, expanded Cumberland Historical Society. We'll go into that detail. Then there was a break. As Stacy said, it took a while to get the building moved. COVID came in, and it kind of was in, nothing was going on. And that's when the council in 2024 appointed the committee. I'm a member of that group. That was appointed by all of you. Our new committee met, and we had about a year of review and planning. We had great help with the library strategic plan that Stacy and her staff prepared, which was terrific. That, that helped us a lot. This spring, we came to the conclusion that the original plan was too expensive and too big. We just didn't need all that space. For example, we were told that the town had records they needed stored in the new, new expanded library. We found that's not true. They have, they've handled that. The library needs are more modest, and basically you can go into those detail. They want to move the friends out of the basement. They want to have another medium-sized meeting room, and they want to provide for the staff, which doesn't have much room to operate. They're sitting on top of each other, no lunchroom, all kinds of things. So the library needs are modest, no needs from the town. And the Historical Society, Steve is going to explain, they've been going through their needs, and they can tell you how that's going. So here we are. There, we want to press for a smaller plan. And the fundraising committee that the, our Expansion Committee wants to do, we've studied four area libraries, and they're Falmouth, Brunswick, Cape, and Yarmouth. All of them raised money in a different way. They all had citizens committees like ours. They each raised about a million dollars. And I think when ready, and it's going to be a while for, for the library and maybe sooner for the Historical Society, we're ready to help with that. And I know we had talked this afternoon, the three of us, and Steve wanted to jump in next, if that's okay with you.
Please.
Thanks, Bert and Stacy. Good evening all. I'm actually wearing two hats tonight. There was a vacancy on the Expansion Committee late last year. I was appointed to fill that vacancy, so I'm now a member. I'm also the chair of the Historical Society. So I get two bites of the apple here tonight. But a little bit, a few words about the history. I'm not sure that in the spring of 2019, the Expansion Committee was ever an official committee or was appointed by the council at that time or not. But a committee did in fact begin to meet fairly regularly with Bill Shane and Scott Simon's architects through the spring and into the summer. And on August twenty-seven, they came up with what they called a preliminary design report. Now, and they, they were before the town council on August twenty-six. Now, I'm not with a fancy law firm anymore, so nobody makes me copies and stuff like that. So I'm a real low-budget sort of operation. I got one copy of something I'll pass to you. Take a look at the front page and then flip to the back.
That's also available on, I think, the town's website still.
So what you'll see is it works its way around the crescent is the late August version of the architect's thoughts and plans about a new connector structure connecting the yet-to-be-relocated Historical Society with the existing Prince Memorial Library. And in the minutes of the late August meeting of the so-called Expansion Committee, there was reference to the fact that the building was scheduled to be moved from Blanchard Road to the back of the library property in October that fall. Well, it was canceled. And in fact, it was canceled several times, and it wasn't moved until May twenty of the year 2020. The minutes that I have, I was sort of a hanger-on in that committee. The minutes that I have stop in August. And I told Stacy and Bert this afternoon that I figured out a reason why. And that is, I think the council felt and, and billed it as well, that let's not sink too much money into professional fees and the like before we know that the, the old schoolhouse is going to survive the, the move. It's not just going to be a pile of bricks in the middle of Main Street. And then with the delays in the movement date, you start in 2020, you get into COVID. And fortunately, they were able to move it in May of twenty at a loss of four, five, six bricks or so. But it really withstood the move quite well. However, at the time, nobody was meeting in person. And it seems as though this semi-official committee just sort of ceased to exist and certainly did cease to meet. And it wasn't until June of twenty-four that you reappointed or appointed once again an official library expansion committee. And they've been meeting regularly in the thirteen months since that time. So again, what you see is a rendering of what a brand-new connector structure would have, could have looked like. But it never came before the council for approval or a vote. It's therefore, at this point, pretty much reference for historical purposes. It shows you what could be built at some point. But it seems clear at this point that both from the perspective of the town and the library, which is a department of the town, that such a structure is not needed at this time. That the town's space needs and the library's space needs are adequately being met. And as Stacy explained, over the next one, two, perhaps into a third year, the library will be examining in some detail its own programming and space needs and may come up with something more specific. In all likelihood, at that point, it won't, won't be something quite as extensive as something that joins the two buildings. At the same time, the society is crammed in its renovated building, which otherwise is doing very well, but they're just really out of space. The basement is packed. By the way, we invite you to come some night that's convenient, maybe, you know, not as a workshop as such, but if you've got time in the, in the hour between six and seven, some night that you're going to meet anyway, we'd love to have you come by and take a, take a firsthand look. And when we get to that point a little later on this evening, I'll come back and tell you what the society is at least talking about at this point as a means of addressing its own space needs. But that I think you'll find to be helpful. If you don't have an actual paper copy, I guess, Matt, you're welcome to keep it, make one. But that's the only one I have. I'll take questions if this.
Yeah, Steve, thank you. Question, so what was the driver outside of, I heard reference to town document space, but like what was the driver to the expansion originally?
Well, the, again, the, the, the schoolhouse building was going to be moved and relocated, relocated to the library property. And the theory was that together with the library, it could become a new cultural center for the town because the proposed connector structure included space for large or small meetings with use of dividers that could be carved up, whoever you would like. A lot of room for display of artwork and the society's collection and other materials that the library itself might have in storage. There would be a connecting corridor, a well-lit, and that taken together, all basically on the same level. You could go from the library to the society and back and really cover quite a few bases at, at the same time. The society would have been open for at least most of the hours that the, that the library already would be open so that there would be that availability, availability to go from one location to another.
Okay. And was there any, sorry, Steve, did you want to say?
So, and the other, the other need that was being addressed was we didn't have any large gathering space. So that has been addressed since then by being able to use the community center in North Yarmouth. We have Valhalla now. So we're, we're basically finding other ways that we can hold those larger gatherings that we want to hold, just not at PMO.
Okay.
The other concept with that particular expansion was sort of creating a new youth area, especially for children. So if, obviously, you don't have the deeper, it might have a, a floor plan in there. But it would have moved all of the children's area into a new space, which would have been like a new storytime area, a new activity room. And it's possible that is still maybe the way that we'll go. We don't know. We haven't, we'll have that community conversation in a couple of years and see if that is something that is exciting to our communities. But mostly, it was the, the need for, for more space to have events.
Okay. And what, what was the driver behind, like, was there any survey or something that kind of got us to a point where we felt like that was, like, what was the driver that got us to that point? You know what I mean? Like, how did we decide that we needed more community space?
So the, the library did do a small survey. And I think it had around a hundred. It did not have a large pool of responses, but it did get some response, which was great. And it, it had some of those questions about, you know, what do you want to see in your library? And that was kind of some of that. Am I mostly correct? Am I mostly on target, Tom? Tom was on the original, original committee, so he'll remember a little of that. But yes, we, there was a survey. The one thing I wish the, the original Expansion Committee had done, they somehow missed having those community conversations. They went from the survey to a rendering and then never took it back to the public and said, what do you think? So that would have been, to me, the nice thing to do. Did I miss anything, Tom?
Tom Foley. I, I chaired the original committee. And one of the driving forces we had after examining the other libraries in the neighboring towns was that each and every one of them had their own children's section, where the children could have their own problem, projects. They could make noise, they could have fun, and they didn't interfere with the other ongoing activities in the library. So we looked at our survey, and it showed that one of the major usage of the library were, were children. And also, the seniors were a very, very big section of it. So we, we tried to put together a project that would accommodate those two major segments of our active population. And the, I haven't seen the, the drawings here, but I hope that we're, we're still taking consideration of having the, the children's program such that they can, they can have their own area to have fun and enjoy the, the library. And in the, in the days when the opportunities for our parents to interact with their kids and play areas and things like that, we thought was an important factor of the library in the future. So that was, that was one of the major results of the survey that we did. So I hope that maybe clarifies a little bit of what we were thinking at the time.
Yeah, no, it does. Thank you.
And I would say that our most recent survey still plays that out. Families, and if you've ever been in our library on a busy day, you know we have a lot of families in there. So I think that, that it's possible that would be the way we would go in the future, but we don't know. Quiet space is the other thing that we heard a lot about in our surveys. So quiet space, place for families. How, how do you best accommodate that? So that's really the question, hopefully, that we're going to ask in a year or two.
Thank you.
I have one question, Stacy. I think, yep, come on up. I'm just going to ask Stacy really quickly one question. I think is part of, I, I know we're doing, we're doing heat pumps in the library, right?
There will be a heat pump put into the current children's activity room, correct?
Thank you, Denny. That's probably Denny's doing. So is part of the kind of proposed three-year plan, are you also looking at, like, do windows need to be replaced?
For me, definitely, as both a new director to this building and the fact that we now have been in a building that is, it's at that age, right? We're getting, our, our building has gone from middle-aged to early forties, fifties. And so it might need a little love, it might need a little faceliftery. So yes, we'll be doing that complete look to see, is it time to replace a boiler? Is it time to replace a window? Is it time to check the skirting on the outside and see if we have rot? Like, those are things that we should definitely be looking at. This, this building is not going anywhere, and we want to make sure that it is in good shape for the next a hundred years. So what can we do for that structure to make sure it's in great shape?
Cool beans. Shirley, coming up.
I just had to, had to do a quick double check, but the 2014 comprehensive plan did have a line item in there to create a community center. And the library connecting these two spaces did provide an opportunity for a community center. So it wasn't a standalone pie in the sky, wishful thinking kind of idea.
And we'd still love to be that place. A library as a community center is, is a thing. It's very much a concept out in, out in the library land, so.
Any of us think it is?
And just, go ahead, go ahead. Kind of following on to that, you know, like, not a random pie in the sky idea, and it connected to something. I understand we're two separate towns and all, but as far as West Coast to go goes, and then also like Valhalla space as well, like, are the different departments talking to each other on, and perhaps North Yarmouth as well, on what do you have coming up? What are our total space needs to make sure that, you know, the library isn't being expanded, being expanded as much as you might think because you're able to use Valhalla space? But is that coming at the expense of other programs that could have moved in there?
That is, that would be an excellent part of that community conversation we have into here. So, oh, yes, we should do that. I don't know how much officially has been done to address space needs for the two towns together, but that gets back to the whole concept of sharing resources. So, I'm looking up at Bob. So we should definitely look at that to make sure that this resource, which is already shared by the two towns, is meeting those two needs. I mean, we have a committee member from North Yarmouth on the current Expansion Committee. So we want to make sure that, that their voice is involved in this as much as our Cumberland citizens.
Other questions? Bob?
I get a little nervous when people talk about heat pumps, and there's no engineer in the room. And the same thing goes with, you know, repairs and things like that. And I think that what I, my takeaway is that this is another example of the necessity of having a town engineer, either a contract employee or, or a full-time staffed engineer that we shared with either North Yarmouth or SAD. But when we add a little bit here and a little bit there, the efficiencies aren't there. And so before we do anything, let's, let's, let's revisit that or, or have a, a conversation about what that might look like.
I, I have started my very basic Excel list. I, my, my next step that I have planned for myself for November is to go meet with Chris, because Chris has this decades-long knowledge of the library. And then, and pass that, talk to Matt and talk to Chris and say, should we get someone actually to come and look at things now? And see if, do we get an inspection, basically? And, and get some actual engineering advice? I don't know, but that might be something we would maybe do.
Bob, can I ask a clarifying question? When you say engineer, are you saying more so, just trying to understand what you're saying as it pertains to an engineer? Are you looking to have someone do like an energy assessment across all of our properties? Like, what is, what is it you're looking to achieve there?
I have a brand-new heat pump water heater in a box in my basement.
Yeah.
And I haven't. And I haven't got to that point where I believe that the efficiency will be gained by actually installing it.
Okay.
Because I have a, a point source propane-fired water heater.
Yeah.
And so when I add my, someday, hopefully, I add some solar panels, then it makes sense for me to utilize that. So I'm looking for, you know, a professional that can say, this makes sense. In other words, you know, adding a heat pump, you know, we, we can, we can add a heat pump that fits in, in, in the window.
Yeah.
We can add a heat pump that's part of a ducted system that's, that heats and cools the whole building. So I, you know, I want to make sure that we, we are
Yeah.
looking at, you know, the best bang for our buck and, and something that's, has a long, a long-term goal in mind.
Yeah. I wonder if there's any statewide resources from like Efficiency Maine for municipalities or... I, I worry about having a full-time staff engineer, because I do think there's a lot of value in someone who's actively working in the field on energy improvements. And I worry that hiring an engineer will pigeonhole us a little bit. I think it's just one of those areas that's constantly evolving. And I think there might be, and maybe Denny knows, some, some value in someone that has, you know, a more active role in the community and other municipalities. That historical knowledge is, is good to get, so.
The heat pump we're adding is to mainly address the cooling issues that we have in the activity room, because right now, we only have heat in that room, and we have to put a window unit in, in the summertime. So this will help with that, but probably also with the heat.
If there was an engineering study already done.
Yes, correct.
Yeah.
So.
Who did that, Denny?
Chris Bolick, one of Chris Bolick's vendors in Yarmouth. Let's see. Engineering Associates.
Okay. All right.
That's what resulted in this, this structure that we're working on now.
Yeah, okay. So I'll be coming to you for my AC.
Okay.
I'll be coming, coming to hang out.
It's nice and cool in the library.
All right.
That's what we're there for.
Just for a point of view, I have a house that's all heat pumps, and I have a heat, heat exchanger for my water heater. And you'd be amazed at what it costs me to get through the winter and the summer, my heating bills. Phenomenal. Phenomenal. And I guess I would have to say, you need to look into it, because they really are efficient. But that's not what I wanted to speak to you about. I'm probably one of the few people in the room here that's been with this scenario from the get-go. I was on the town council at the time, and my purpose was to do this building with no cost to the taxpayer. We wanted to raise all the money right up front. The genesis of, of this whole idea came basically from Thomas and those of us in the Historical Society and the library. The size of the building was called for by Thomas. The extra space for meeting was designed because it found out that in a town, we had really a lack of meeting space. And I still think we have a lack of meeting space. Not to the extent that this initial building wanted. But I know that this past year, we tried to get a space to have our Historical Society annual meeting. Couldn't find one. It took us almost a week to find a place where we could have one. That being said, the, the space designs were, of the whole thing, started with Thomas saying that the library needed this space. The Historical Society came up with the fact that we need space. And that's where our side came from. And then it was thought that the corridor between the two would make a beautiful place for other displays. Come COVID, everything shut down. I mean, it shut down, it collapsed. And then we come through that, and we're into the situation now where Thomas and Stacy have re-analyzed what they feel their needs are at this time. Now, before that, we had this all set to go. We had demonstrations, we had people come to look at, at the models and so forth. And I had several people ask me to have the town bond it and build it. And I said, no, my philosophy is, we're going to do it the way I said. We're going to try and raise the money publicly, so that it won't go on the tax rate. But I had many citizens that wanted me to build it right then. Now, we're in a different view, and we're looking at something more efficient. We do have other places for meeting, as I said, in North Yarmouth. And we've looked at it, the Historical Society still needs more space. The library is, is re-confined, they're doing things differently. And I just let you know, I'm just sitting here, my memory's not always good, but I remember this from the beginning. And I'm sitting here, hoping that everybody will work this out, because there are specific needs by both parties.
Thank you, Bill. That's, I think, a perfect segue. And yes, Mr. Brigham, come on up, that's a great segue. I do want to also hear what those Historical Society needs are, which I think is the second half of our meeting, and I know you're on the Historical Society too, Mr. Brigham. But Steve, if you'd maybe also be willing to come up after Peter and start drilling into that, that'd be great.
Bailey and Bob have really brought up something that really is kind of a 50,000-foot level thing as you folks are meeting with the school district and the North Yarmouth folks. That we, with this new project that we're building with the school and other buildings we have, I mean, we have over $100 million worth of very, very sophisticated equipment. And we're at the point, now, as an example, Bailey, you were talking about engineering background, that Wyndham has a engineer, interestingly enough, he's a Greeley grad. And he is in charge of not only the Wyndham school facilities and the town facilities. And I think at some point, and again, it's, the, the school has got to be the driving force, but the, the general meeting is that we're at the point now that we should not be leading by maintenance, that we reached a level and will save it if we have some kind of an engineering professional that's overseeing that. But the town can't do that individually. But I think the school district and the town have got to have this conversation, because you can't continue to have kind of a, you know, we'll deal with a maintenance thing when it happens, when you've got very, very sophisticated heating systems, you've got swimming pools and all this. So my thought is, when you have your next joint meeting, that, and I know the school district has kind of bounced around it, but I think everybody's kind of afraid to take that step. And we don't need to be screwing around with a Larry and Darrell operation when we've got, you know, $150 million worth of sophisticated equipment. And I'll probably hear the slings and arrows as I, I leave. But that should not be left dangling, because it's, that will save the community hundreds of thousands of dollars once we get our, once, once we get that engineering act together. But the town, we can't do it by ourselves. We don't have that. But we're big enough now that we need to bring things up a notch.
Thanks, Mr. Brigham. I would love, if Steve, you'd be up, or whoever is going to be talking a little bit on the Historical Society about future plans?
Sure. Exactly. Thanks, Steve. So back, I think toward the end of May, Stacy and Burke met with Matt, and he suggested our all getting back to him in about 90 days with some thoughts about expansion plans and so forth. And we're well ahead of that 90-day deadline, but we thought the time was of the essence and it made sense to get started. So the, the society is pretty much out of room. The display, the, the, the main display floor is largely packed with a, just a bunch of really fascinating exhibits put together by Kathy Allen. And there's not a whole lot of extra space out there. Down below, which is Carolyn Small's domain, where we take in all the old things and catalog stuff, there's just an awful lot there. We moved some big things out to the West Cumberland Community Center. That's not an ideal location, but it is all the same town-owned space that's available to us. So I, we convened a special meeting of the board back on July 2nd, and I said, we're going to deal with two issues tonight, and that's it. Number one is, what do we think our space needs are at the current location? And then, secondly, should we go ahead and get an estimate as to what the, the cost would be, particularly if we're thinking in terms of public fundraising? So there was a quorum there that night, and everybody agreed that, yes, we should pursue the space needs and should return to Simon's Architects and get from them their estimate of that portion of the sketch that I think has made it all the way around the horn, that was immediately adjacent to the current building and extended out a little bit, but not too far, and by no means was anywhere near to being a connector. And so they, we had a, some, had a good conversation on the phone with the architect from 2019, Austin Stevens. And they got right back to me last week. And so I will circulate to you another piece of paper for your review. It's my only copy, so this is something I've got to get back. I'll just tell you ahead of time, the area shaded in blue is the existing society. The portion on the left, as you look at it, is the upstairs. The portion on the right, as you look at it, is, is the downstairs. Oh, thanks, Stacy.
Look at this sherpa.
So by asking the architect to go back to the 2019, 2019 plan, we saved the cost of starting at, you know, square one all over again and coming up with something brand-new. They could take that portion of what they did then and just sort of give us a, a figure and a sort of a schematic as to what that small portion might be today. So what you see in the gray on the, what I'll call the Blanchard Road side of the Historical Society building is a, a two-level extension. One, ground level, the same, you know, the same level as the current display floor of the, of the, of the schoolhouse, and then a full basement level as well. The total foot, footprint is 1,672 square feet, divided equally between the two floors, and that makes it 836 square feet per floor. I circulated that by email to the members of the society board last week. And although we're meeting on Wednesday this week on a different topic, I suspect we're not going to have time to take this up again. And I don't know how long I can keep twisting arms to get people to meet in the summertime. We have a tradition of taking the summer off. It's been broken twice already, with a third time coming up on Thursday of this week. So tolerance for more meetings may be limited. But we've got to get together as a board and decide, number one, is 1,600-plus square feet sufficient for five to 10 years? Or is it not big enough? And if so, how much bigger should it be? Also, from the architect, we received an estimate of an approximate cost of a million bucks to do the two-level extension. And we have to assess our depth and energy and, and interest in mounting a public fundraising campaign that would raise that kind of money in a reasonable period of time. And if so, who would be in charge, and who'd be willing to pitch in, and all that sort of detailed stuff? We haven't got there yet. All we have is a drawing showing you the proposed size and a cost estimate. A lot more than we, than where we were back in, back in May. So take a look, and those are our thoughts at this point on expanding the existing building while we continue to make some use of the West Cumberland Community Center on a kind of a object-by-object basis, so to speak.
Sorry for my sticker shock reaction, Steve.
It's okay, Bailey.
I, there's a sticker shock for me. I don't know how much things cost, apparently.
So on, on, sort of piggybacking off of Bailey's sticker shock, realizing that it's an estimate from an architect, not a builder, do we know why that amount for, what, 1,600-ish square feet? Is it like adding on to the, the building that makes it a difficult thing? You know, I'm just...
See, I didn't get into one of that kind of detail. I, I will say that when they, am I right, folks? When they priced the whole connector in 2019, it was $6 million?
Okay.
Which is not accurate at all now.
Which is also an obsolete estimate today. I think we all know that the cost of building, cost of materials has gone up in, in the years since pre-COVID. Now we're dealing with tariffs, or the potential of tariffs on top of that, who knows? It's anybody's guess. So, you know, I, I guess I, I don't really know why it increased that much. I will say that that additional rectangular-shaped piece was not priced separately six years ago. So I can't give you an apples-to-apples comparison on that gray shaded piece. I might be able to squeeze that out of the folks' assignments, but I don't have it now.
Go for it, Bob, the builder.
It's, that's a lot of money, Steve.
No kidding.
Yeah. When I sit down with people to build a house or an addition, a lot of times what we do is to do a sketch plan. And before we get a full set of documents, before we get an idea of, you know, whether they can afford it, whether it's too much, too little. And that strikes me as that we, we may have missed a step, but that's, I think some more homework needs to be done, because I, 1,500 feet for, for a million bucks is... Prices haven't gone up that much.
Well, there's, there's work and analysis left to be done. This was a kind of, not a shoot-from-the-hip response on the other part, but just a, a short-term turnaround. So there may be some, some, you know, effort that could be, be made in that, in that area. And then, and then there were, we haven't, we really, at the board, just focused on the footprint of the building and not so much the interior. We, I think we envision, I think it's safe to say, we envision an open-area basement. But the first floor, the second floor, depending upon how you look at it, whether that's going to be subdivided into office-type space with actual hard walls and doors and so forth, or whether it's going to be also open space with perhaps movable dividers or separators, which give you the flexibility to respond to your needs, I think, in a more cost-effective way, is an issue we haven't discussed as a board yet. So I can't, I can't presume to speak on behalf of anybody else.
Denise. Back to Bob and Bailey. Go for it, Denise.
Just looking at the document, it did say 750 plus 20% for fees and other things like that. So, yeah, that is a million. But also, the plan, it looks like it has like textile storage and some like specialty rooms that I imagine textile storage, you probably have to have it climate and humidity-controlled, I would guess. So just, I guess, back to needs and, you know, flush that out more. It might not end up being so specialized, the plan, so.
Cool.
I think just as a, as a general overview, and this goes back to the, the library expansion, you know, there was a lot of pluses about that plan that I liked. You know, one of the things that I don't like about when you, when you build a building, you have maintenance, upkeep, utility costs, and all those things that are associated with, with owning a building. But as a general, you know, my thoughts were that, you know, this, this would have been a nice space to have built out. It had a lot to offer the community. And I'm not sure that at some point, we, we don't actually build that. But I think that there's, there's, there's people in the community that I think can help us or help you and, and help the library, you know, get a more realistic idea of, of, of cost and, and what, what you actually need.
Yeah, and to that point, Bob, I have no personal experience in fundraising on which to draw. I can't tell you, I mean, I know we have some, some well-off folks here in town and so forth, but I don't know if they would, in fact, come forward. We're, unlike the membership of, of the Prince Memorial, we're a fairly small organization in terms of membership. So I just don't know what, what potential there is there. The one thing I want to point out is that the proposed addition- The one thing I want to point out is that the proposed addition would not in any way stand in the way of an ultimate connector. It doesn't block the path. You'd just simply build off it instead of the current old schoolhouse. And in fact, this was, this rectangle was a part of that broader plan that I circulated earlier. It uses town land. We would need town permission. It would be joined to a town-owned building and therefore probably become a town-owned building in and of itself. And all kinds of questions like that have yet to be addressed. We're just at the real threshold at this point.
Bailey, did you have a question?
No, I, I can't remember now, sorry.
Stacy.
So I just, I want to say that I, as the director right now, 100% support the Historical Society in whatever effort they decide to do. My plan is still, in three years, if we do something, it's, it's, it's going to include the Historical Society. We're in the sibling sweater together, and we're going to move forward together. So, if they start now, that's fine with me. It'll be a great start for potential project in the future for us. But I very much am behind whatever the, the society wants to do.
That's great. I, I would imagine, and Bob can confirm this, but if he were to do any construction, probably more cost-effective to do it at the same time with the same contractor, right, than two separate projects?
Nothing will ever be as cheap as this right now.
There you go. Any other comments, thoughts from the council, or anyone else who's here who wants to talk on either of these projects? Come on up.
I just want to mention that I've been growing up in a business, family business. Parking is extremely important. And I'm at the Historical Society three days a week now, so I do see what's going on for parking. I pay attention to it where somebody who's never been in business doesn't. But your, the library actually needs the parking. And somehow we need to go around the back of the building. You know, I know there's some woods there. So that's something that needs to be coming down the road because there's certain events that you have at rate full, and there's no parking for Historical Society. We do get, some people come in and, you know, check us out. But, and the other aspect is the temperature control in the building, so things don't mold, that type of thing. So that's part of the cost that will be involved, too. But we really do need more room. You know, I know it as, because I'm the one that just, you know, got done decorating upstairs, and I did a big veterans' display. So any veterans that are here, would you please bring your information, or maybe your parents was in it? Because I created notebooks for the veterans. And we've got a lot of people that aren't on the monument, so it's important that we get as much information as we can, so.
Okay. Thank you, Kathy. Any other thoughts or comments? Mike?
I, I got a question either for Shirley or Bill. When, when we approved the, the new firehouse, we, downstairs, we built the, the room, we said we're going to do it for meetings. And then, when we did, we bought the Valhalla, well, the old golf center, we bought that back, we bought it for meetings. And when we did this, we renovated this, we put the, the walls that can be moved for meetings. So I guess my question is, what are you looking for for meeting space that we don't already have in the town, and, and what's not sufficient for your needs? So, is that a fair question? I mean, because I, I listened to, I listened to you guys talk about rooms, room for meetings. Good evening, Bill.
There you go, Mike. The problem is, if you look at it, there is never enough meeting space, ever. Now, you judiciously use them and you spread them out, but there's the Boy Scouts, there's the Cub Scouts, the meeting you talk at the fire station gets used by the fire department also, so they will have classes scheduled to go in there, so that's out. Valhalla, they will have the over 55 or all of that stuff meeting, that's out. You guys have got this meeting closed, hall, closed up, that's out. I don't think you ever have enough meeting space. The Historical Society on their own, in their own, does not have enough room to hold a meeting of their own. We meet, we meet on our annual, our regular meetings, work meetings, in a space about the size of that, to, those two tables. If we wanted to bring you folks in to participate in our meetings, we don't have the room. So we'd have to come down here. So, greed, the meeting space that we had initially put there has been dissipated a bit by all of the things you mentioned, but on any given night, it's difficult to find a meeting spot. So, I, I think that if you have a meeting spot, it will be used.
Thanks, Bill.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
Denise, and then Andrew? Oh, Andrew, and then Denise.
So, this is more a question for you, Matt. With the, no, I, I haven't really gone through the website to see if there's a, a real quick, you know, finding meeting space link with the new website that we're rolling out eventually. Will there be the ability to do that and, you know, find a meeting, and then it'll show, we'll list all the ones and give you the option of, I want it to be on Thursday, all right, well, these are the ones that are available on Thursday, and size, and, and all that?
To an extent, yes. We still want to have that, that one-to-one interaction to confirm that that space is actually available, but, but the request could be automated and go through and say we need to have a space at this date, at this time, and then staff can say, okay, this is available, and confirm it, and can, then can schedule it. But I think we should have that operability with the new website.
Great. Denise?
That's what I was going to say. I thought that's it, just all the things in the same place, you know, like, you can either do it by date and then it'll tell you it's available or not, or you can go by place. And then once someone has nailed it down, it's unavailable, and you can see that, so there's not conflicts, so. Yep, that was it.
Perfect. Well, if there's nothing else, thank you, Stacy, Burt, Steve, Shirley, Mr. Styles, Mr. Bingham, Kathy, everyone who was here tonight. We appreciate you so much coming out to talk about these two projects, and I feel as though our walkaway is stay tuned for more information, and we're really excited to hear about everything as you drill in. We'll take a quick recess before kicking off our normally scheduled council meeting at 7:00 PM. All right. Come on in, everybody. Come grab a seat.
It's definitely got its challenges.
Lots of space. Come on in, welcome.
Yeah. Thanks, Peter.
Welcome, everybody. Happy Monday. Today is July 14th, 2025. We will call the meeting of the Cumberland Town Council to order. At 6 o'clock tonight, we were lucky enough to have a workshop with the Library Expansion Committee and the Cumberland Historical Society to talk about future projects and some of the work that they've been doing behind the scenes. Thanks all who came to participate in that, it was wonderful. First up on the agenda is the approval of minutes from the June 16th, 2025 meeting.
So moved.
All right, is there a second?
I'll give you a second.
We have a motion and a second, and a discussion on the motion.
I'll give abstain.
Okay. All those in favor? And one abstention, motion carries. Okay. Next up is our manager's report, Mr. Sturgis. I, looks like we've got quite a group here.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Yeah, we, we do have quite a show of force this evening, and that's primarily to celebrate some, some great work that was recently performed by Officer Merriman, and I am going to let Chief Rumsey come forward and introduce this article.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, councilors. Thank you for having me for a couple of minutes. Good to see you. Officer Merriman, would you mind coming up and joining me at the podium? So as you know, we have a pretty great team at the PD, but we always want to take the opportunity to recognize excellent work when it's done. And so I asked the manager if we could come up this evening to celebrate some work that was recently done by Officer Merriman. So what I'll do now is I'll read this lifesaving award presentation to Matt, which details his recent actions. Officer Merriman, on June 20th of this year, you were working your shift in Cumberland, monitoring traffic for violations to ensure safety for the motoring public. At approximately 5:13 PM, you heard a medical call for a person choking at a residence about two miles from your location. Based on your training as an emergency medical technician, you were aware that choking is a life-threatening condition requiring immediate intervention. You immediately left your position and after activating your emergency lights and siren, proceeded to the residence in question. Upon arrival at the residence, you exited your cruiser and entered the home, finding a man who was clearly in medical distress and unable to breathe. You maintained your composure, speaking calmly to the man and his wife, explaining that you were going to administer abdominal thrusts. Knowing that every second counts in the situation, you did not hesitate and administered numerous abdominal thrusts as indicated by your training. These were not initially successful, so you followed up with additional abdominal thrusts and back blows in further attempts to clear the food that was obstructing your patient's airway. Your efforts paid off when the patient was able to dislodge a portion of the food in his airway, allowing him to pass a little air. When Cumberland Fire EMS personnel arrived, you briefed them on the situation and turned care of the patient over to them. Later, you learned that in the ambulance on the way to the hospital, the patient was able to clear his own airway and resume breathing normally. Later that evening, Cumberland Fire EMS paramedic Brad Chacon, who is also a registered nurse, contacted me to let me know about the assistance you provided the patient. Paramedic Chacon informed me that as an EMS provider of more than 20 years, yours was the finest example of a good deed he has seen performed by law enforcement. Cumberland PD's lifesaving award is given to a member for an extraordinary effort or act that resulted in the actual saving of a human life that would have expired without the member's direct involvement. Cumberland Fire EMS Chief Dan Small and paramedic Chacon both believe that your actions on June 20th qualify you for this award, and I agree. Your actions, your actions are an excellent reflection on Cumberland's public safety family and your commitment, and on your commitment as a guardian to this community. It's my honor to present to you with this lifesaving award. I'm very proud of you. Congratulations. Not to brag, but this is his second lifesaving award. Well done, sir. Thank you.
Does anyone want to?
How many ribs did you crack, Matt?
None.
Anyone else? Congratulations, Matt, thank you so much. I can't even imagine how stressful that must have been, and...
He loves the spotlight, doesn't he?
Oof! Um, thank you all so much for being here. Wow. Do you have anything to top that, Mr. Sturgis?
Madam Chair, I cannot top that on, on the best of best days, but that's just great news, and it's just, it's a, it's a successful ending, and just some great work by some dedicated personnel, so we're really proud of Matt, so it's great to, great to have a great team. I have a few updates for this evening. Many have heard, but hopefully this is a reminder that we will be having culvert, culvert work being performed on Greeley Road here, set to begin on July 21st. The project's going to require two separate closures over a four-week period, and we ask residents and commuters to plan for extra travel time and follow the posted detour signs. And we appreciate folks' patience as we try to improve our infrastructure. Also importantly, looking at local businesses, Springbrook Farm will remain open for business throughout the project. During the During the first phase, the farm will be accessible from the main street end of Greeley Road, and then during the second phase, access will shift to the middle road end to access Springbrook Farm. So we're working diligently to try to minimize the duration of road closures, but some of it will be inevitable because it is a culvert, they are culverts that have been replaced that span the entire roadway. There is also some planned railroad crossing maintenance that we just became aware of today through the railroad. And we're looking at Muirfield Road and Tuttle Road, potentially starting on July twenty-third, which is not ideal as we are looking at the same work we're doing on Greeley Road. So Assistant Manager Bolduc is working with them, trying to coordinate those efforts. If we need to shift some of our plans, we will to try to minimize the impact on the driving public. As many also know, we are about to start the waste collection transition, and the town of Cumberland is transitioning to automated trash and recycling collection system. And the cart distribution will begin on the twenty-first of July, so that's upcoming. And then August fourth, the official collection, automated collection officially will begin. The twenty-second to the thirty-first, residents can drop off their old bins if they would like, or cans at the Public Works Garage at twenty-three Drown Road. Cassella will be mailing informational cards to each residence, and updates will also be shared on the town website, our social media, and in the Crier newsletter. And we are very grateful for folks' cooperation as we try to improve waste collection services, consistent with the contract that the town has. Some really cool community projects are coming forward with the volunteers from the Home Depot, and we continue our partnership with them to support residents in need. Some recent and upcoming projects are going to include a ramp installation on Skilling Road, steps for a veteran who lives on Farwell Road, and a new railing for a resident on Greeley Road, which is scheduled for next week. These projects are completed at no cost to the town or to residents, but we are grateful for this ongoing collaboration and their, and their, and their help. Couple of really cool upcoming events. Coffee with a Cop is gonna be at the Rec Center at Valhalla this Wednesday at, from ten AM to eleven AM with Captain Co. And then there's the Women's Veteran Engagement Session that I spoke of last month. That is still at Valhalla Recreation Center on Monday, the twenty-first, from five to seven. And at that point, folks can come and learn about available resources, meet service providers, and enjoy light refreshments. Registration is required for that, and the contact information's available. A couple of other items that found out as well, and this is great, I talked to Denny Gallaudet about this just a few moments ago. The town received its Community Resilience Grant today in the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars, and that is to install solar panels and EV charging station over at the West Fire Sp, Fire, Fire Station. And then just a little housekeeping, the, did reach out from the school today to have joint meetings with the school board and North Yarmouth Select Board on October twenty-third, which is a Thursday, and February twelfth, which is Thursday. And the February twelfth meeting would be in North Yarmouth, while the presumed, or we think at this point, the October meeting would be held, held here at Cumberland Town Hall. And I think that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Matt, I wanted to ask a question here. We used to get regular updates from MMA, and, and we used to get a, a magazine, we used to get a, a newsletter, and I'm concerned the recent legislation that was passed by the state legislature, and I understand that MMA was a signer-on of that legislation also. And so I'm, I'm curious as to, where we are as being, you know, kept up to date by MMA. I know our legislatures, legislators, you know, didn't get in on this one with us either, but I am a little concerned MMA was a signer-on of that and, and just, you know, I used to get it in my inbox. We used to see the legislative updates, and I haven't seen that in a while, so I don't know if that's something that is the town's not keeping up to date, or MMA's not, but I'd like to make sure that we're getting those legislative updates.
Yeah, we, I can double-check for that. I know that they have every council member's email address, so they're supposed to be, well, they, they should be distributing them to all the council members as well. Do have, Representative Mitchell is planning on coming to the next council meeting for a legislative update, at least from the most recent session, as she asked, and I spoke with her last week, so we'll have her up for that on the, on the twenty-eighth. But, and we do have planned, I know there's one bill that passed regarding land use, LD eighteen twenty-nine, and town's attorney will be coming to a workshop in Sep, sorry, in August on the twenty-fifth, and then inviting the planning board and the Comprehensive Planning Committee as well to that, to talk about that, and that's, that one's fairly significant as it comes to local land use, but we can...
That's, that's the one I'm referencing, and with MMA signing on to that, I just would, I think we were left out of the loop there completely.
I always, I always reserve my editorial comments on that, Council Vail, but I think, yeah, there's a lot to come when it comes to that. I, I don't disagree with you by any stretch. But, yeah, we're, we're on that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Um, Bob, sometimes those updates, also, I would check your spam or other folder and, um, in your town email. That's usually where mine go to, to the spam in your email.
Yeah, I, I get that, and I haven't...
You haven't seen it?
I haven't seen it come up.
And then, Matt, just two questions. Did, was there any notice given to those folks that maybe about the railroad or near the railroad, or any communication that we've done surrounding the railroad work?
The railroad work we just found out about this morning.
Okay.
Yep, so, uh, so, yeah, Chris is, Chris is on that. We're trying to coordinate that and see as far as notifications, what, what needs to be done. I know they are skipping a couple of different crossings in town...
Yeah.
Because of some challenges that they do have, but they're, you know, it's, you kind of scratch your head a little bit because the work was just done on some of the crossings, and, but apparently it's replacing ties that...
Huh.
So we're trying to get more details as it came to it, but, yeah, it was, it was Operation Blindside that we didn't know was gonna be coming, so...
Classy. Nice. All right. And then trashcans. I heard you mention people can drop them off. What happens to them when they're dropped off? Are we recycling them? Like, what's happening to them? Just wondering from there, where do they go?
They'll be getting recycled.
Recycled, okay. Thanks.
Andrew?
Matt, with the culvert replacements, I'm assuming the same access as Springbrook Farms for Greeley Road, the side of Tuttle, or, of Twinbrook? Same, you know, from the main street side for the first part, and then from the middle side for the second part?
Yes, sir. Yep.
One last question. I was wondering if there was someone who wanted to maybe get on the list for that Home Depot project for some of the work? How would they go about doing that?
I would encourage them to contact Devin Galvin, Active Living. Yeah, yeah, she's, she's just great, and, you know, she's had a great history of working with Home Depot and coordinating those efforts, so, yep, she'd be a great contact for that.
Perfect. Oh, Bob?
Back to the MMA, but just a second. We used to get the legislative updates right here on the, on the, they were delivered to us, you know, so we, I mean, they were, you know, monthly, bi-monthly, whatever it was, but we used to get them right here.
Yeah, I can, I can look into that, Council Vail, and see if they can, if they still produce some hard copy as well, because I didn't receive the hard copies all winter either, so I gotta buy it in my inbox.
Paper savers.
Yeah.
Okay, any final questions for Matt before we move on? All right, next up then is public discussion. Public discussion is for comments on items that are not on the agenda. Comments are limited to five minutes per person. Rebuttal comments will be limited to two minutes. Public discussion topics may be brought up again under New Business for Further Council Discussion. Is there anyone here who would like to chat with us? Come on up, Mr. Gallaudet, and if you wouldn't mind saying your name, even though I just said it for you, and where you live.
So, Denny Gallaudet, sixty-seven Range Road. I'm chairman of the Sustainability Subcommittee. And tonight I want to introduce you to our University of New England Sustainability Fellow, who is working with us, Samantha Rie, and she is going to be helping us. She's already been with us a few weeks and will be helping us for the balance of the summer on some of the tough nuts remaining in our climate action plan. So we're very glad to have her. We applied, and we were honored to be given a gift, or given the right to have one of the fellows from the program. So Samantha, would just say hi and a little bit about where you're from and what your studies?
Thanks, Denny. Good evening, everyone. I'm Sam. I just graduated in May from UNE with my BA in Marine Affairs, and for about a month and a half now, I've worked with Denny on getting, doing research on food waste reduction solutions and with the goal of creating tangible recommendations for the town of Cumberland, which I'm looking, looking forward to sharing with you in a couple of weeks at the next town council meeting.
Great.
Thank you.
Welcome, Sam.
Welcome.
Do you want to join the Coastal Waters Commission with a marine science background? But maybe, maybe we'll wait on that one.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Welcome.
All right, is there anyone else in the public who'd like to come on up? Come on up.
Good evening. Shirley Story King. Shirley Lane, East Cumberland. I'm here tonight, I think you set me up perfectly when you said a million dollars is a lot of money, and I agree. I'm here tonight to ask you to invite the SAD and North Yarmouth to enter in a discussion to renegotiate the cost-sharing agreement between Cumberland and North Yarmouth with regards to the MSAD. It's something I started before I retired from the council, and it just sort of got dropped, and with three new members, I think we might have some new energy to pursue that agreement. I expect our agreement with North Yarmouth has to be about the oldest cost-sharing agreement in the state since it was negotiated approximately sixty years ago. I'm not sure any other RSU or SAD agreements are that old. We had the opportunity in two thousand and eight, when Governor LePage wanted us to consolidate, to renegotiate, but we did not. We were just happy to have the state accept our current standing, so we did nothing. Currently, Cumberland pays sixty-eight percent of the school budget that is over APS, which is essential programs and services, and we have sixty-eight percent of the student population. Many districts in southern Maine, and all over the state actually, base their cost-sharing agreements fifty percent on state equalized value and fifty percent on student, um, student population. We base ours only on state equalized value with North Yarmouth. And I, and back in nineteen sixty-six, when the first, when the agreement was negotiated, Cumberland and North Yarmouth were a little bit different, um, as far as demographics go. They're a lot less different now, and so I, and I sent you some information that Bill Shane prepared as of fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four. If we had negotiated with the, with North Yarmouth and the school district, Cumberland taxpayers would have saved one point three million dollars in the ten years prior, ten years ending two thousand and twenty-four. So from two thousand and fourteen to two thousand and twenty-four. I, I shared that chart with you. Some of you have seen it already. I dug it out of my files. And so that's what I'm here tonight, to ask you to advocate for Cumberland taxpayers and renegotiate that cost-sharing agreement. Thank you.
Thanks. Is there anyone else here who'd like to come on up for anything that's not on the agenda? All right, we will close public discussions so we can get to items on the agenda. All right, so first up, we have twenty-five dash zero seven-two to elect a town council chair and vice chair. We held our council caucus last Monday where we talked about committee assignments, leadership commissions, all of that good stuff, and we're at that time of year, so here we are.
Well, I will make a nomination for chair, Brookthorpe Filson, AKA Tig Filson, and vice chair, Michael Eads.
There's a motion.
I'll second that.
There's a sec, there's a second on the motion. We can discuss on the motion, or we can, Denise, go for it.
I mean, since our council caucus was not televised, I won't get into all the gory details, but just want to give like a brief overview of why I support this decision. I, it is, well, I don't know if it's common, but it isn't unheard of for chairs to repeat year after year in other towns. It might not be common in Cumberland, but I think that you would do a fantastic job as chair another year, especially given what we have coming up this year. I'm thinking of revale, school project, trash, comp plan, all these things where we're most likely going to be getting a lot of feedback and inquiry from the public via email and other avenues. And one thing I've noticed in the email feed over the last year is how thoughtful and respectful and factual you are in your responses and very detailed. And even when things, someone's feeling very passionate about something and upset about something, you keep your cool and you provide information. You don't escalate. It's, it's always very nice to watch, since we're CC and all that. I'm kind of just sitting here like, wow, this is a really great response, so much better than I could have, you know, written, and it's very detailed and, again, factual and sticks to the topic. I appreciate that there are no dumb ideas. Like, I can come with an ordinance idea or something else and bring it to you, and it's, it's gonna be on the agenda. There's no gatekeeping. It's, you are an empowering chair, like, all of us, I feel, are welcome to bring forth ideas, or even if we don't agree, it's, it's open. It's an open flow of ideas, and I appreciate that. And I appreciate you too, Mike, and I think you'll make a great vice chair. I think you'll make a good team together.
Madam Chair.
Thank you, Denise. Of course, Mike.
And, you know, historically, we've changed chairman, the chair position every year. I wasn't in favor this year. I, I am in favor of continuing you, Tig, for another year. I think it's important, you know, we, we didn't have a vice chair that wanted to do it for the right reasons, and I support her decision. But, so we needed a continuity of what we have going in this town, and you're the right person to do it, so... You know, the, the way we do it, you know, the, the chair serves the vice chair, and the vice chair steps up. But this, this is gonna be, this is good for everybody, everybody in town, so I support US Chair for another year, so...
Thank you, Mike. Okay, we have a, have a motion and a second, and there have been some wildly kind words. Thank you. And Mike, I am really excited if the motion carries because I know there is lots and lots and lots I can learn from you, so, everyone has a different style, and that's fun. I guess we'll call for a, oh, actually, we're going a little out of order. Is there anyone on the, from the public that would like to comment on this before we do our vote? No, okay, all right. We'll call for a vote. All those in favor? All right, unanimous, Brenda.
And I just would like to take a moment to say thank you to Councilor Douglas, who has been an incredible leader as the vice chair for this year and is going to have another hall of work to do when we put her in charge of the Finance Committee again as part of our next agenda item, which is twenty-five dash zero seven-two, Town Council Committee Assignments. So this is what we reviewed as part of our caucus as well. I think, Bob, you typically like it when we read these out loud. Would, should, should we do that? I'm not volunteering you to do it. I can do it if you want to, or you can.
No, I, I think you, you can read them. There's...
Okay.
They'll be posted anyways.
Yes.
It's pro forma.
Okay, so for our ad hoc committees, Active Living, formerly Aging in Place, we are going to keep with town staff for this year. For Board of Appeals, Councilors Maholic and Thorson. Coastal Waters Commission, Councilors Douglas and Filson. Comprehensive Plan Committee, Councilors Filson and Vail. Housing Authority, Councilor Thorson and Vail. Lands and Conservation Commission, Councilors Magoon and Vail. Planning Board, Councilors Maholic and Vail.
Planning Board, Councilors Mahalik and Vale. Prince Memorial Library Advisory Board, Councilor Douglas. Recreation Community Education Advisory Board, Councilor Magoon. Shellfish Conservation Commission, Councilor Eads. Council Committees, Board/Committee Nominating Committee. Councilor Eads is chair, Filson and vice chair. Senior Property Tax Committee, Councilors Thorson and Vale. Cumberland and the North Yarmouth Joint Standing Committee, Councilors Magoon and Mahalik. The Finance Committee, Councilor Douglas is chair. Councilors Magoon, Mahalik, Thorson and Vale on that committee as well. For Ordinance, Councilor Thorson is chair, supported by Councilor Eads and Councilor Vale. Tiff Committee, Councilor Filson is chair, supported by Councilor Thorson, Magoon and Vale. EcoMaine, our lovely town manager, Mr. Sturgis is going to head that up for us. With the alternate is Assistant Manager Bolduc. The Greater Portland Council of Government, also by our town manager, Mr. Sturgis. Our GP Cog alternate, Ms. Stacy Daigle, who I think we have with us here. Stacy, we got you. Next up, the PAX Committee, also for manager Sturgis. And the alternate would be the Assistant Manager, Chris Bolduc. Any questions, changes to what we have? Any, any public discussion on that? Okay, we'll close public discussion on that. Any council discussion? Take a motion if there was one.
We have a motion.
All right.
I move to approve the Town Council Committee Assignments as presented in the meeting materials.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous Brenda. All right. Next up, we have 25-04, 074 to appoint members of the Comprehensive Plan Committee. I will happily punt to our chair of the nominating committee, Councilor Eads.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We had a number of applications for the comp committee. We had a really good meeting, different views on different people. We went back and forth and I know I sound like a broken record, but I want to thank the people that have applied for these positions. It's so important to our town. In fact, your willingness to, to give your personal time to help up and become a part of the future, part of the solution. So anyways, in the end, we came up with the unanimous decision. And I think the, the applications spoke for themselves, but Jane Galladet Wilson and Betsy Harding were our choices to fill the vacancies on the comp plan.
Perfect. Is there anyone from the council, or sorry, from the public that would like to comment on either of these? Okay, we'll close public discussion. Any council discussion?
I just want to say, I know this is a lot of work, so definitely to make point, I appreciate people stepping up to participate because I think it's really important work.
Twice a month, yeah.
That's a lot.
Big meeting. Bob, anything from you? All right. Take a motion if there was one?
Just real quick, I, I think, I think we know where Jane gets her commitment to the community and carries on right after her folks' willingness to give. So thank you.
I'll give you a motion. I move to appoint Jane Galladet Wilson and Betsy Harding to the Comprehensive Plan Committee.
I'll second.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Unanimous Brenda. Okay. All right. Next up, 25-075 to accept a grant from Efficiency Main for electric vehicle charging stations to be installed at Prince Memorial Library. All right. And Mr. Manager, these were the grants that had been put forth through Efficiency Main?
You are correct, Madam Chair. This is, this grant is to provide four charging stations up at the Prince Memorial Library. Back in December, the council authorized the town to make application for this grant. And then we found out shortly thereafter that the town was conditionally awarded the grant. The condition was that the federal funds from Federal Highway Authority were going to be available. Let's just say it took some time to confirm that that was there. And in June, actually, sorry, earlier this summer, the Efficiency, Efficiency Main confirmed the availability of the required federal funding. So the town has, has received that or will receive that amount. There is, on the second memo we had, there's a breakdown of it. It's roughly about just under $100,000 to do the installation, of which Efficiency Main is going to provide $40,000. There's also tax credits that offset that. And that's, that was one of the questions that we had involved there. Those are still in play. And that's just under $30,000. And then the town had a local match of $29,964.30. The town has those funds available in our building fund. So there are, and they will, there are, they are sufficiently there to offset the town's match. So that helps us leverage basically, you know, three times the amount that the town would be placing in there. The EV charging stations that will be installed, they will, those who use that will pay for the cost of the electricity. So it's not a free supply, but we are looking to get that done. So, but in order to commit that to the town, we, why we brought it forward to the council tonight for authorization to accept the grant and then we will expend the funds as the project is, but I know revision is ready to, to start work and, and get this project underway.
Can I ask a question? I'm not certain, as I don't have an EV, but I know you both do. Will this live on the apps as like a location that people can charge at? Okay, cool. Thank you.
Yeah, generally, generally what you find is that, you know, depending upon who the provider is, they network that out. So it does show up as a, you know, similar to if, if you were looking on Yelp for gas stations.
Yeah. Awesome.
Mike?
Go ahead, Denise.
Matt, can you explain how we arrived at the 35 cents per kilowatt hour? Is that standard? Is that like the average of regular plus peak? Because I know that rates vary. So just wondering what like our method was at that cost?
That's what the prevailing rates were at the time.
Okay.
So you can see, they can, they can flex up or down, but generally you're going to set that and then probably establish or evaluate it after a year and see how that sits. But if you find there's a vast increase in the cost, then we'll find that.
And then I'll pass to Mike then. I have one more question. I can wait.
Matt, in our early meeting before the council meeting, they expressed a concern on parking at Prince Memorial. Can, can you speak to this? Is this going to interfere with it? I realize it's, it's four stations, four parking spaces, but if we're already tight down there, is, is this the best place for it? And then when you get done, I want Andrew, is this one of the fast, you described, you told me about the number of charging stations, the difference?
It's hours, not minutes. For this, for level two, it takes hours to charge, to fully charge, not minutes for some of them. So it's faster than just plugging it at home to your local plug, but it's not as fast as the ones that are on like 95 where you stop in, charge, you go to the bathroom, you get out and then you go on your way.
Okay.
So to your question, Council Eads, is, is it the best? I think as far as the best location in, in the town of Cumberland, it's probably one of the most ideal locations that we have. However, you know, in, in the case when you have a highly attended event, those spaces may be filled by other cars and EVs looking to charge. They don't have the same, let's say, the same rights per se as, as a handicap parking space would. So they, they may occasionally be used by cars that aren't charging them, aren't using them for charging. So there may be some sacrifice at times to make sure that those who do attend have it. So that generally you'll find that I think it'll, it'll meet the needs. But in the event that it doesn't, then I think people will just have to find ways to be flexible around it.
Thanks, Matt.
Andrew then Bailey?
Sorry. On, on that note, this might be something for the ordinance chair to look at, but I want to make sure if we're making this investment that we're, we have the investment available for those who would use it. And having an EV charger there and then not having the ability to use it kind of defeats the purpose. So I don't know if that's something on the town level, if that would have to be something on the state level for, you know, realizing that it's not legally the same as, you know, a handicap parking space or anything like that. Is there something that we can do to get it closer to that? So we're not, you know, so we have the, the option for those who want to use it and have it available as opposed to having, you know, a non-EV char, car in that space, making it just a nice piece of plastic.
I can, I think there's solutions to it. I mean, I don't think you're going to find very many occasions throughout the year that you'll find them in conflict. My experience in the past was in Fort Williams where we installed EV charging stations down there. And they have roughly a million visitors a year that would come through there. We never found it even in conflicts, even on days like Beach to Beacon. So generally there's enough to accommodate everyone. And then perhaps in the future, you could look at that if there was, as talked about earlier this evening, if there was an expansion to the parking area at the library, then you could dedicate it at that point in time perhaps and just say only. But I think that there may be ways, at least in the outset, for folks to peacefully coexist. But it may be something that we'll want to look at as we gain, gain experience too. It's, you know, if you find that, that, that is in conflict consistently, then we'll have to determine the best way forward. But I think experience may be, may be the best educator when it comes to it.
Yeah, I think it would be good to have the library staff have some sort of go-to response that they're aware of and trained up on. So if there is conflict.
True.
That's going to be the point of contact, most likely. And so they know how to appropriately deal with it and, you know, what the, the town policy is or, or anything as opposed to just them just kind of having to make it up on the fly.
No, we can, we can, we can definitely address that.
Did you want to go, Bailey?
No, that was actually a similar question. So go ahead.
Sort of like three questions slash comments. It is basically a $30,000 match with the town. And I know that at one point, the hope is to break even by charging, right now 35 cents per kilowatt hour. But that, that's one thing where if people are going to be using those spaces because they're cramped for space, then that is significantly going to hurt our ability to break even on that or recoup some of that cost. So that is something worth looking at. Also, it said that, that $29,964.30 would be made available through capital reserves designated for buildings, which would not impact other budgeted priorities. Are there other non-budgeted priorities that could take priority over this where we could use that $30,000? That isn't, that's on the schedule or, you know, the to-do list, but they haven't allocated yet?
I guess you could say safely that we're not cannibalizing other needs to do this.
And then this match is just for this installation? When it comes to maintenance or eventual replacement, like what's the lifespan on these? And do you think there will be a grant for replacement at a certain point or just kind of like a one and done?
It may be a good use to have for the, if there are revenues, to put those into a dedicated account to save that, to offset for, you know, reserves for replacement and repairs as needed. But they're under warranty for a while at the start. And then once you get outside of that is when you should think about, you know, replacement heads, I think, you know, cable repairs, things along those lines that, that take place.
And then by that time, maybe, you know, fast chargers are, you know, technology is going to advance. So you might not want to maintain or repair something that is now obsolete. So, okay.
I think on that note, that, and Andrew, you have a Kia and I have a Hyundai, but those are different than Tesla chargers, right? And so these are non-Tesla chargers, right? Is, does Tesla just do their own independent? Like I've just never heard of, right, any Tesla charging stations being available to municipalities?
No.
No, okay.
But the, yeah, these are more of the, what you would find is you're more uniform, standard, standard head versus, yeah, the Teslas are. Yeah, they're more, I guess you could say proprietary. How's that for a way to describe it?
And those, the four ports are standard across. Okay.
Yeah.
Not everything but Tesla's basically. Okay.
And it's different wattage. I mean, it's different, it's different power level and it's a whole different makeup as far as the amount of juice that is coming at it too. It's, it's faster and, yeah, and again, it's proprietary to their, their stuff.
I believe I asked you this when we were originally having this discussion. So my apologies if this is repeating, but I guess I would ask the question twofold. One, the library, and I think I know the answer, was the location put on the application, right? So there's no flexibility there. Okay. Two, if in a year we decide that this is prohibitive to the spaces that we need, it's not operationally functional, do we have the autonomy to relocate the chargers to a different location? Like two of them?
If we needed to do that, we would probably just work through Efficiency Main and talk about those challenges at that point. Because it, I mean, when you do that, you're talking about basically, the only thing you're, you're moving would be the units themselves.
Yeah.
A lot of the money that's spent is in the electrical work and the trenching and things along those lines that you have to do to get the conduit over to it. That, that's a, a pretty penny of the, of the install charge.
Okay.
And updating your panel to, you know, to make sure that everything's setting up a service for the power and all that jazz.
I think it would be, I'm in favor of this, but I would like to monitor it and understand what our ability to pivot is. So I don't know if we can do like a conditional approval, but I guess I'm worried about in a year, the library saying, okay, this isn't working right now. We don't have the parking spaces. A lot of times this is being used. And I want to have some like ability to be able to like, per se, relocate to Valhalla, which I think could be another good option, given, you know, how long it is to play nine holes, 18 holes, tennis, pickleball, whatever. I think there's some longevity there. And they have the existing infrastructure to be able to support car chargers. So I just would like to understand that. I don't know if anyone else feels that sentiment, but I am a bit weary, I guess, given parking constraints. Sorry.
Denise and Jeff?
Those concerns make sense. I'm looking at the contract and it does say that, you know, we're going to come get you if you relocate, remove, disconnect, blah, 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 and it was not pre-approved by Effinches Humane in writing. So it seems like there is a way. It's not explicitly stating it, but it sounds like there is a way to get pre-approval to relocate if needed.
Then I feel comfortable with that as long as that there is some process in place to be able to pivot if it's not making sense for our needs. And maybe it'll do great. Who knows?
I guess just, you know, a couple of things that come to mind is, you know, I got a question to comment, but, you know, with your concerns Bailey, I think we could probably add four parking spaces at a more economical cost. I guess my only comment is, does it make sense now to look at, you know, we've heard about the shortage of parking. Does it make sense now to nail down a parking plan long-term so we don't add six spaces, for example, and then rip them up three years from now? But I mean, that might be a long-term plan that is more economical, but also more, makes more sense long-term to resolve that possible situation. And then I guess my second question is, what's the warranty period? Does anyone know on, on these charges?
I'd guess it's five.
In the past, I've seen a range between two and, and five years. So in that range.
Okay.
Charger. One more thing, please.
Love reading contracts. It does say here, so I don't know if you would need some special, special permission Bailey, but it says that it must remain in its originally approved location for a minimum of five years. So you'd have to have probably a pretty good reason why you'd need to move it before that time since it's right here in the contract we're agreeing to.
I could give them a reason. I feel confident in my negotiating skills. The fact that there's verbiage there offers that there's opportunity, right? If there wasn't verbiage there, that would concern me. That's my, that's my reading of that contract language.
I think when we voted the first time for this, we
I think when we voted the first time for this, we committed ourselves to it. Well, this is just frosting on the cake, if you will. Our commitment was made last time we voted on this.
And the final is during the budget, right? Next year's budget? Is that true?
No.
Or is this already good?
I think we're, yeah. We'd be authorizing, right? I'm super in favor of this. And part of this is going to be anecdotal, I think, because one, having a Level Four is they're fast, but if you really need to charge fast, I think a lot of folks are going to, well, Andrew, keep me, keep me honest because your charging habits might be wildly different than mine, but I think folks are going to like that market basket location where you can charge your full car in, you know, 25, 30 minutes versus, I think a lot of this could also be kind of, you're at the library for a couple of hours, you plug it and it helps kind of build you up a little bit versus it being a at-home need. Because I think a lot of people that end up leasing or purchasing electric cars are usually installing a charger in their home. And I think we have some pretty substantial data from Bill Longley and the LCC who track all of those installations, right, at homes, homes in town.
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Would someone from the public like to comment on this agenda item? Come on up.
Hi, I'm Lou Galladet on Range Road in Cumberland. I guess I mostly have questions. We have two electric cars, so I'm, I love chargers, but I'm concerned about where it's going to be and also concerned a bit about what Andrew was speaking about. As a frequent visitor at the library, those, I understand that these are supposed to go up front, up at the top. And those are very sought-after places. There's at least two, I think two. Handicapped. And then two others. I'm not sure where you're going to get four more there. There's only two or three more. And there are many people who don't have handicap status who love to park up there for a variety of reasons. So I just throw that out as something to think about. And then the other piece is, are these going to be required? In other words, if someone, just as you were talking about, can somebody else park there? I can imagine there would be a lot of times where there'd be no electric people, electric cars at the library and these two places would, or the four places would be empty. So I think that whole issue of how are these, are these going to be required places or not is something that needs also to be settled. Just ask you to think about that. Am I correct that this is only going to be up, up at the top?
I believe that's true because it's.
Because of cost?
Well, yeah, and you wouldn't have to cut all the way through the parking lot. So it's, it's probably the most direct connection.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Well.
Is there anyone else from the public that would like to comment on this before we go back to council discussion? Okay, we'll go back to council discussion.
I, I'm just struggling with this, not, not the concept of it. I'm just struggling with the location. And Matt would, while we were, everybody was speaking, I was thinking, I mean, could we do something here at Town Hall, all the way down the end of the parking? Could, I don't know. I'm worried about the parking, especially after the early meeting we had tonight. So I'm, I'm all in favor of the concept, it's where it's going to go. And I just need to be convinced that's workable, that's.
Sure. To your question, Council Reed, I think, to be honest, the, I think the most direct approach to that would be to say, thank you for the grant, but we're not going to take it and apply and change it for next year and re-apply in the next round and identify the location here at the Town Hall. Because we do have a charger out back right now. It's, it's rarely if ever used because it was back when the town had a, one of those, I think it was a Hyundai Kona EV back a couple of years back. So probably the most honest way to do that would be to say, thank you, but we're going to pass and then re-apply in the future. I think that'd be the, the best way. We could accommodate the four spaces here fairly easy, except if it's a baseball night.
Is there a world in which, this is probably a stupid idea, but if there is a big event that we know is going to drive a lot of attendance, just putting up a sign or kind of communicating beforehand, be respectful, everybody, you know? This is going to be a really busy night here. If you don't need to charge, you know, free up, free up the space, right? I just, I hate to, I think the parking concerns personally are super valid, but also it is a lot of money to be turning down for a community need. And I think we also lost the EV chargers at the SAD because of the construction project. So just a thought on whether or not we could also serve this in a nice community way, just, you know, be a good neighbor and be respectful. Councilor McGinn?
I think, you know, a lot of the charging stations, whether they're the Level Three, the fast chargers that charge in, you know, a matter of, you know, 30 minutes or so, or Level Two, which, you know, to get a full charge, it takes, you know, hours, usually have a, you know, this spot is available for charging and not for, just I have an EV, I'm going to park there. It's, it's not that. It's, you know, it's some sort of sign that says, you know, for use while charging only kind of thing. You know, I, I'm leery of putting these off to the, to the end of the parking lot or someplace like that, you know. Part of it is, we're trying to incentivize, you know, going to the Climate Action Plan, incentivize use of non-fossil fuel and to reduce the carbon footprint, you know, the power, while whoever's charging is going to be paying for it, it's coming from the solar field back there. And shoving it off in the, in the corner or, you know, in the back kind of defeats that purpose of trying to say, hey, like this is part of what we're doing, you know, it's four spaces out of, I don't know how many are at the library, 50-ish.
I think roughly in the 50 to 60 range.
Maybe. And, you know, I think if it's, to Jeff's point, maybe it's, we're getting, talking with the library and the Historical Society about plans for expanding parking, you know, if we need to right now, but then also for in the future as a way to look at that. Yeah, I'm just, yeah, it's leery of the, you know, putting it off to the side somewhere or, or anything like that. I think Bailey's comment about Valhalla is an excellent one. And I think that's, you know, this is a test case. Valhalla, I think is, you know, maybe even a better location for it. Not that this one isn't good, but, you know, there's, there's different levels of, of good. And maybe that's a, you know, next year or two years from now, we, we'd look to see if we can apply for one of, you know, a grant at Valhalla and, and see how that goes, if this goes well.
Any other discussion? Councilor Vale?
I think the town manager has given us a, an off-ramp and I think we should take it. I think we should turn down the, the grant money and wait till we've got a parking plan expansion. I think it, there's too many unknowns going on here. Nobody leaves home without looking at the gas gauge. You know, it's, it's, so we're not, we're not fulfilling a critical need. It's a nice-to-have-today sort of thing. And I think that by delaying this and, and spend a little time with a parking plan down there, I think it's, as Ms. Galladet pointed out, by, somebody's going to pull in there and they're going to feel like, I can't park here because it's a charging station. And, you know, there's the, the other person drives in, hey, this is a charging station. Why is somebody parked here who's not charging? So I think we need to delineate that. And I think there's a couple of things that we should kind of work out. So I, I think we should put it to, put it on the back burner for this, this year.
Madam Chair, if I, if I may, to provide help to the council on a, on a direction, if you take no action and go on to the next item, that's as good as saying, no thanks. And I will, if it's the council consensus, because, because you can't make a negative motion, if that makes sense for Roberts. So you could say that, you know, we take no action on this and that would, that would be the end of it. And then if that's council consensus.
I think my gut reaction is to say no right now. As, as much as that pains me, I think that we need a larger plan. I also am just not sold on the location being the library, just based on time spent at a location. And I want to make sure if we're accepting something, we're maximizing it and not just doing it because we got it kind of thing. So I would be in support of what you said, Bob.
Counselor Thorson?
Jump on that bandwagon also. Like, it's still like 30 grand that, you know, we're spending on something that seems to not be ideal and I would rather do it right and have a plan. And I don't necessarily agree with incentivizing EVs by you get a front-road charging spot, like rather than putting it off in the corner, why not? It's there, it's available for you as a perk. Like, I don't think that it needs to be like people with the EVs get the front of the parking lot necessarily, that, that philosophy. But, yeah, we just heard a presentation about parking problems. So it's, I don't think we can just ignore it just because we got a grant. So I'm, I'm okay with also saying no this time.
I, I'm going to jump on that as well. I just think that maybe we may have more success with revenue at Valhalla, you know, while golf's only half the year, there's a lot more traffic there. But also the top of the library, I don't think is the place for charging, plus the parking, parking constraints we all talked about earlier.
I have a motion for you when you're ready.
No motion, Mike.
I'm just going to.
Motion to table?
I'm going to give my two cents, which are, we, we have our consensus and that's good. I, I will also say that I think that we heard about parking tonight, but if we hadn't heard about parking, this might have gone through. And so I think that maybe moving forward and also being respectful that hours from town staff went into putting into this grant, that we should in the future maybe be a little bit more intentional with the questions that we're asking before town staff is moving forward, spending their time and energy on things like, and kind of looking into, to make sure that we have a holistic view of all of those considerations before we apply, if that's reasonable.
Counselor Thorson?
Question to that is, at what point in the process do we get to give our feedback rather than it coming up here on an agenda item for discussion? Like, because that's already hours wasted putting together an application perhaps where the location was flawed to begin with. So at the risk of meddling in, you know, town staff's ability to put applications forward, does it need to come to us earlier to discuss? Like, you know, at the drawing board phase? Or how would you suggest this not happen again, basically?
I mean, I would take it for, I would, I think our town manager has an opinion personally. I think it's just like a little bit of a learning, right? Like, parking, like maybe we should have like looked at, looked at more parking data the way that we would if we're talking about a four-way stop sign, right? We get DOT data there, like what, you know, maybe Stacy could have given us some information on when they're really crowded and when they're not and, you know, all of that. I just, I think it's a lesson learned. But let's go to the man who chairs operations for his opinion.
Madam Chair, I honestly, I honestly did not tee Counselor Thorson up to ask this question, but that's the reason why we bring this to the council, to ask for your permission to apply for grants when they come up. So I'd like to, before you get, before you get a little ways further down the road, pardon the pun, we'd like to have council approval for application as well as acceptance. So that's, that's where we're at and we will do that going forward. So I think you have a lot of good points here. And to Counsel Reed's question, motion to table is also just, just as great.
We make our decisions on what we know today. We don't make our decisions what we don't know. And same thing, it holds true with ordinances. We make ordinance on the knowledge we have will make the best decisions for the community. And as science changes and as things change, we change with it. So I don't feel burdened that we've, we've, we've cost the town time or the staff time. We make decisions on available knowledge and, you know, that's, that's how it plays out.
I'll, I'll just, I think like echo your comments, take about, you know, and sort of to, to the manager's comments about making sure that we are looking at the process for accepting any of this stuff. And making sure that, you know, not necessarily to wasting time or anything like that, but also what does it look like to these granting organizations when we apply for something, they say, yep, we're going to give you all this money, and then we say, no, thank you. Is that going to negatively affect the next time we apply for something different from, you know, the same organization? Or say, well, last time we gave it to you and you said no, so this time, we're not going to, to give it to you on a completely unrelated project? I'm just saying that's something we need to be, you know, really cognizant of when we are in the applying phase. And so we don't get a reputation in these places that potentially want to give us money that we ask for it and then refuse it.
Matt, do you have any, any knowledge of Efficiency Main or anyone else keeping tabs and like holding grudges against towns for not accepting grants? Or do they look at each one based on its merit? And then if you, you know, turn it down, they just go to the next eligible person?
Yeah, I think that's a great question, Counsel Thorson and Counsel McGinn. It's, you know, things change. Sometimes things happen and there are other considerations that come into play that can change the landscape on the ground. And no one gets, you don't get penalized for it. And there's another community that, you know, they probably had an 11th town that just maybe got pointed out so they can, they can reapply those funds and reappropriate them to, to another community or two or three, depending upon the extended request. So I, I think that, you know, I don't think there's a scorecard being kept. I think you're fine. But things get, like I said, things can change and conditions on the ground might change and things come into play. So I think it's, I think you'd be fine. I wouldn't, I wouldn't make a practice of it, but I would.
Great. Any other discussion before we either table or take no action? Take a motion to table if there is one?
Madam Chair, I move the table, item 25 dash 075.
Is there a second?
I'll give you a second.
And just as a reminder, there's no discussion on a motion to table. So all those in favor will call for a vote. Four, all those against. Two, motion carries. All right. Next up is 25 dash 076, to hold a public hearing to consider and act on a liquor license renewal for Rye's Pizza. So for folks who are watching at home, we renew these, or folks put forth their renewals every year. It's an annual thing. These are actually sort of done by the state. And Chief Small, Chief Rumsey, and Code Officer Bill Longley do not have concerns with actually any of the establishments that are reapplying for their liquor license renewals, which is a pretty good stamp of approval. And we have two of them in the room today if they want to comment on these, Chief Small and Chief Rumsey. If you do have any last-minute concerns, let us know. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on these items before we do council discussion? No? Okay. Any council discussion?
Would, would there be an interest in doing all three?
The Mikey's special. Mike, you're so predictable. You're so predictable. And yes, I would support that.
Get behind that?
And Andrew, did you see any errors on the applications?
And these are state applications, so I'm not sure. We're one's common mistake with the phone number 111111111.
Right, I saw that. Okay, well, I had to ask.
But I will, in all seriousness, having it typed out is very helpful. And so not having to worry about, you know, reading people's handwriting or anything like that. like that. I think if, for us getting our applications, so we can type them out and have them like this, it makes it a lot easier to, to read.
I'm interested in when it says document uploaded, who's it uploaded to? I couldn't find it on all three of these applications, document uploaded. So perhaps they have uploaded it with the expectation that we would be able to read it, but it doesn't read on, on our file.
Oh, the menus and the floor plans. Did those come through to town staff, Matt?
No, they do not. They, that's what they submit as part of their application to the, to the state. So we don't, we don't receive that as an attachment, but the state looks at that as part of their application process.
But presumably they're uploaded in for, in order for it to be a complete application?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Just for a heads up, the, the three organizations are Rise Pizza, Rachel's on the Green and First Track Investments, which is code for the Cumberland Fair. I mean, I would hear a Mike Ead special if it was on the table, but I'm not sure what the appetite is from the-
Go for it.
Oh!
I'm on board.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on these agenda items? We are doing, it is officially a public hearing, three public hearings. All right, I will close the public hearing then.
Madam Chair. Item 25 dash 076, I move to approve the liquor license for Rise Pizza. Also, item 25 dash 077, move to approve the liquor license for Rachel's on the Green. And item 25 dash 078, I move to approve the liquor license for First Track Investments.
I'll give you a second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Does it pass the straight face test, Mr. Manager? Great.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, call for a vote. All those in favor? Unanimous, Brenda. All right. Okay, next up, our, our very exciting agenda item, 25 dash 079, to hold a public hearing to consider and act on amendments to Chapter 315 zoning, Section 28.6 Public Safety Telecommunications overlay district of the Cumberland Code of Ordinances, to include the parcel of 14 Tuttle Road tax assessor map, R01 Lot 03, as recommended by the planning board. We have a robust group of presenters and it is a public hearing, so we're going to be thrilled to have, give everyone the opportunity to come up and speak, if that's your wish. So I'm going to punt over to our town manager, Mr. Sturgis, to get us kicked off.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This evening, what the council has in front of them is a follow-up from the planning board, which last month held a public hearing on this and has moved it forward to the town council for their public hearing this evening. And this would be to add parcel R01 Lot 03 to the Public Safety Telecommunications overlay district. The, the, the gist of this, the lot that is currently under discussion currently allows an antenna to be installed up to 180 feet. However, the request on this is to allow the Public Safety overlay to go onto this parcel, which reduces the amount of area that needs to be set aside for the fall zone from 100% of the length of the tower to 75% of that, thus reducing the amount of area that's needed for the fall, the fall zone, if, in case, God forbid, a tower falls over. The other three parcels that are in there also have that, had that Public Safety overlay put on them. So it would be amending the ordinance to add that parcel to that, which would allow it to reduce that fall zone area. So this parcel itself, I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn over to Chief, Chief Rumsey here in a moment to talk about this. There's been an acute need for the town to find a solution for our communications challenges that we've had over the years. For me, it's been a year. For Chief Rumsey, it's been all nine years of his tenure here. We have a significant issue down on the, on the coastline of the town, along the Forside, where we have dark zones, where there is no communications available. Our radios stop functioning at that point or they can't maintain a signal. And that's our primary motivation for the town to be involved in this conversation. Turn over to Chief Rumsey, so he can talk about the history and the different alternatives that the town has looked at over the past few years, as well as we have Towns Engineer for our radio signal here as well tonight to talk about the optional sites that we've also been looking at, as well as kind of talking about the difference coverage challenges. So Chief, I can turn over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager and Council, Councilors. Good to see you again. If this works, I want to start by showing you a one-minute and 13-second video that was shot earlier today that I think will help illustrate the issues that myself and Chief Small are concerned about. See if this works for us.
Chief Rumsey, could we hold just until Counselor Reed's-
Absolutely.
Return, sorry, I just want everyone to get on a level playing field.
That is absolutely fine. While we're waiting, I'll tell you that when the manager was saying that I've been dealing with this for nine years, I reached, leaned over to Chief Small and asked him how long he's been wrestling with these shortages in the quality of our radio system. He said about 20 for him. So I feel less bad, but I can tell you that when I got hired here, and you, some of you may have heard me say this, in June of 2016, so just a little over nine years ago, before I even actually started, I came into the police department to meet some of the officers and do a ride-along and sort of start to get the lay of the land. And when meeting a couple of the employees, they basically shook my hand and said, welcome, can you please fix our radio system? And so over the last nine years, and I will go through a little bit of a timeline about over the last five years, the concerted efforts that we've made. We haven't made much progress, but we have an opportunity now to, to make some progress. And so when Counselor Reed's comes back, show you this quick video, give you a little bit of context for it, go through the timeline. Can answer any questions that you might have. Then the plan is that I will turn it over to Norm Boucher of Communications Design Consulting Group, the radio engineer we've been working with for, for plus years. And then the folks from Verizon are here to provide a little additional information. And then I suspect you may have some questions of us and we'll do our very best to answer them for you.
Perfect. And could I also bug you to hit that little arrow that'll put it into full screen? Just, it might help folks-
This one right here?
Yeah, I think, I think so. Let's try it. Yes, we're there. Okay.
Hopefully the audio works. Here we go. This is a traffic stop that was shot on Route 1 today at probably about 2:30 in the afternoon, give or take. Gonna pause that just briefly, so that those of you that are watching can take a good look at what Sergeant Hendy is doing right there. He has just removed his radio from its holder on his load-bearing vest and held it up in the air. So he's got one handful of radio, holding it up, trying to get an extra three or four feet of elevation and get it a little bit away from his body to improve the potential that his radio transmission and reception is successful. We call that the Statue of Liberty pose, because we're fans of, I guess they call it tombstone humor, but it's not funny that we have to require our police officers to do this, to speak on their radios.
How important is your audio?
Do you, are you comfortable with what you heard or do you want us to go over that again? I can, I can narrate a little bit, too.
Would you mind narrating it a bit? Do you mind playing it again and just narrating it?
Sure.
Thank you.
That's the sound of the, that's the sound of the car's radar that you're hearing. Sergeant Hendy just called dispatch to let them know that he had just made a traffic stop. They told him to go ahead, but he didn't hear them. They repeated, asking him to go ahead. Right there, he's calling out the location of his stop and the license plate of the vehicle that he stopped. Both of those are very important pieces of information. Should this traffic stop go really bad really fast, dispatch needs to know who he's dealing with. That's the registration information and where he is, so help can come and get to him. That's the location information that he tried to give them. That's dispatch saying there's a little static, they couldn't hear what he said, they asked him to repeat his traffic. He's already made contact with that driver. He's trying to assess who that driver is. Is that driver doing something illegal? Does he pose any risk to Sergeant Hendy? And he's got his face basically in the passenger side window of this car to figure out what's going on. He now has to stop, divide his attention between this driver, who luckily turned out to be a very law-abiding, by all accounts wonderful, human being. But we don't know that when we walk up to the car to deal with this radio issue. He regives the license plate again. Dispatch is asking him again, what's your cross street? Where are you on Route 1? He's decided he needs to try to take drastic measures to get his traffic out, that he's by Falcon Drive. So he takes his radio out of its holder to hold it up, away from his body, to make his transmission. So that was shot in broad daylight, excellent weather, with a cooperative motorist. I would just ask you all to consider what if that had been bad weather? What if that had been nighttime? What if that person in that car was combative? He had to divide his attention, as I mentioned, very unsafe. Now, what Sergeant Hendy and I were discussing earlier today, imagine if instead of on the side of Route 1 out in the open, he was over on one of these buildings that you see just off to the side of Route 1, inside a building that is metal, that's concrete, trying to talk on his radio to dispatch and back, back and forth. Zero chance of success there. These examples, and many like this one, that occur with our public safety troops every day. The reason that myself and Cumberland Fire Rescue Chief Dan Small are here tonight, we have been seeking and are seeking a way to dramatically improve our radio system for the safety of our first responders and also the good of the community that our first responders serve. I mentioned that I was hired in nineteen, 2016, sorry. And for a couple of years after I got here, our efforts to fix our radio systems, I'm just gonna call them a Band-Aid approach. We got an opportunity to, to do a small project, to add a repeater, to replace a, an antenna, but never a concerted effort to find out, where are we? Where do we need to go? And what is it gonna take to get where we need to go? So in February 20th of 2020, we hired Norm Boucher of Communications Design Consulting Group. He completed an assessment of our current system, concluding that our public safety radio infrastructure is obsolete and at the end of its life. And that radio coverage in parts of town is poor and in other parts it's non-existent. In, I think around December of 2021, he made a presentation to council about our system failing and the needs for a new plan. We've been asked recently, while we've been talking about this most, most recent project, what else have you done? What else have you tried? Which brings us here today. And so I want to just take a minute to explain what we've done and where we've been up until now. In January of 2022, so a little over three years ago, we began talks with a private company that was interested in building a tower on town-owned land on Range Way, a short distance from another existing tower site. In January 2023, so a year we worked on this project, the company we were working with on a ground lease for Range Way changed to a new company. And then about one month after that, uh, duh-duh-duh-duh-duh, yeah, change, we worked for about a year, changed to a new company. We established contact with that new company, who still sought to build a cell tower on town-owned property on Range Way. In March of 2023, just so you get an idea of sort of the holistic nature of what we've tried to do to rehab this system, we published a request for proposals to build a tower by others, which would hold public safety radio equipment on the west side of town. I just tell you that for a little context about what follows. In June of 2023, the town received only one bid by a private company interested in building a tower on that town-owned land on the west side, contingent on them being able to find a cellular carrier to become a tenant. Not sure what's causing that, but try to soldier on. In October of 2023, the West Side Tower Project fell through because the tower company could not find a cell carrier as a tenant, citing a general downturn in the telecommunications market. That West Side Project would not impact any of the area of the town that we're talking about tonight, but I'm just trying to give you a context about the telecommunications market in general. In March of 2024, so we go from fall to the March of 2024, the company that was working to build a tower on Range Way pulled out prior, just prior to the signing of a ground use lease, citing again a general downturn in the telecommunications market. Fast forward a couple of months, another private company offers to collaborate with Cumberland to build a tower on Range Way, but fails to follow through with us. Fast forward a couple of more months, another private company offers to collaborate with Cumberland to build a tower on town-owned land on Route 1, near the Shabig Transportation Lot. The town expressed interest in partnering with this company and the company indicated they would work to find a carrier. After initial conversations, the town has not heard from this company. In October of 2024, SBA, which is the owner of the existing tower on Range Way, confirmed that there is not space at the required height on their tower for our equipment. So that existing tower is not an option for us. And then in March of 2025, we were contacted by Verizon to discuss building a tower on privately owned property at Tuttle Road and Forside Road. Coverage mapping by a radio engineer shows that this is a prime location. So I spent several hours today going through years' worth of communications and emails to give you a very quick bullet point of all the efforts we've made up until now to find a home for our radio equipment that would dramatically improve the quality of radio transmissions for our public safety personnel and for the community that they serve. Enter Verizon and this project that we're discussing tonight, which Norm will come up and show you some coverage maps that I think will be very striking and will be very telling about why we are hopeful that this project would move forward. Before he comes up, I'm happy to try to answer any questions that you might have. If there are none, Norm?
Any questions? Andrew?
This, I don't think is necessarily a question for you, sir, but for, sort of teeing up for the Verizon one, if I call 911 but don't have Verizon, will this, is there something about 911 that like gets signal that will go through? Or is it a, this will really help people that have Verizon, but if you have AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, et cetera, I won't be able to contact you to say that I need help or anything that's going on?
The Verizon folks definitely can give you a much more articulate answer, but the short answer is no, it's not carrier specific. So if there is a tower and your phone connects to that tower, you are going to be able to call 911 and get an answer, so that help can be sent to you. All right, Norm?
Thanks, Chief.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Norm Boucher and I'm Principal Consultant of Communications Design Consulting Group. As the chief mentioned, we've been working with the town for sometimes, I think, late in 2020, where we started to analyze what your problems are here for public safety communications. And they're pretty, pretty significant. Right now, your existing system only has one transmitter to cover the whole town and, and it has four receive-only sites. And essentially built for probably mobile communications to some reliable degree. But, um, let's see. So here's a coverage, coverage map of the existing system. So as you can see- so here's a coverage map of the existing system. So as you can see, as I mentioned, one transmit site, which is on Walnut Hill, which is also an FAA radar site. And unfortunately, the public safety system there, police and fire, and the FAA radar equipment don't coexist. There's some interference from them. The other three sites-
Norm, would you mind, do you see the X in the top left-hand corner? If you hit that little X, oh, down, down, yep, it'll make it a little bigger, right there, yep. Okay, thank you so much.
Sure. As I mentioned, there's three receive-only sites, one at the fire station on the west side, there's one here at the town hall, and the other one is on Chabig Island. So we've got some coloring on the map here. The outline in blue is the town of Cumberland, and within that you're going to see white, green, and gray areas. So the white areas is where there's some degree of high reliability, 95% confidence level, that you're going to be able to communicate from a portable inside of a residential building. The green area represents on-street, and then the gray represents no coverage. So if we focus on the east side of town, you can see there's a lot of gray there, and especially up and down Route 1 and 295. Here's a map that focuses on the east side, and as you can see, 295 is actually inside of a bowl. So we've got terrain on both sides of the highway here, up and down 295. All the signals coming in from, well, there's only one signal coming in from the west, but talk-out, which is the portable talking back to the system, we've got Chabig here, and the other site, the closest site would be Town Hall. So there's no coverage here. Same thing with Route 1. I don't know if you can see, Route 1 is also on the opposite side of this ridge here. There's a couple of ridges, one, this one here, I'm sure you're all familiar with, and another one right here. And then, of course, there's the Forside, which is, again, significant terrain that rolls down to the water. Same map, but a little bit enhanced to try to show the terrain. You can see that we've got a cut in the terrain here for 295. Route 1's on the other side of that ridge, and then down here in the water is the Forside where coverage would be-
Really quick, the terrain, you're flagging it, is the terrain impacting coverage, just from my knowledge?
Correct. So the terrain here, so signal coming in from Walnut Hill-
Yep.
Will traverse this way.
Okay.
Now, when it gets over here, this valley gets shadowed by the signal, and the signal goes right over, and there's no coverage there. And at this point, and it kind of will stop right here. And then again, because this goes down, it's not going to be in the coverage-
Okay.
On the Forside.
Okay. So the terrain would be considered a variable impact?
Yeah. So terrain is very hostile to radio signals.
Okay.
Especially, well, and this is VHF band, 150 megahertz, which is a lot lower than the cellular folks. So the coverage that you're getting from a VHF signal sort of hugs the terrain, but not 100%. So obviously, if you can see, this is the new proposed tower, White Pine. It looks right down this valley and also over, whoops, also over the Forside. So it's a perfect spot for a tower for communications. As the chief mentioned, we look at Range Way. We spent a lot of time on Range Way. As you mentioned, there were several interested parties there wanting to put up a tower. And it's an existing tower there, owned by SBA. So this gives you an idea. So this is just the coverage footprint from Range Way alone. And as you can see, we still have issues on the eastern side of town here, and of course, you know, on the Forside. The tower in Chabig, which is at the fire station there, they've got a 120-foot tower there, you can see it does pretty well on the Forside, but it doesn't do anything anywhere else in town, right? So you know, it's, right now, it's just there to get coverage on the Forside.
Can I, sorry, one more question. Cell towers, or towers that we're talking about here, if you have more towers, is it creating a stronger signal? Just trying to get my footing. Okay. So the Chabig one being there is helpful. Adding this to the mix makes it more helpful for everybody. Okay.
Right. Yeah. So right now, I'm just showing you what each site is contributing to coverage.
Okay.
So here's Chabig and Range Way together.
Okay.
We're remitting the other two sites that are planned for the other side of the town. For now, we're just concentrating on this area. As you can see, both sites, with both sites transmitting, we still have some issues here, right? So to cover this area with these two sites, you know, it would be, you know, we're getting close to good coverage, but we're not there. We want to make everything white. That's the goal.
Yeah.
And this is the proposed White Pine site, which, as you can see, because it's located right on a ridge there, looking down 295 and Route 1, it also covers the Forside, at least from a public safety standpoint, and the frequency band that they're using, we can have reliable coverage in that area using one tower instead of two that we were planning before. So now we're going from a town-wide four-site system with this site going in, it'll be three sites. So that's a significant cost in upgrading the whole radio system. So the new system, with three or four sites, they're going to be all transmit and all receive. So they're going to simulcast, and they're going to be providing coverage town-wide with the four towers all coming on at once. Right now, we just have one. We're going to four. So we're going to have a more uniform level of coverage for radio, public safety radio. And this design here is essentially for a handheld portable that's worn at the hip, which is a worst-case scenario for, you know, attenuation, body attenuation, no height, as you saw in the video. The officer had to raise his radio in the air to get, try to get more signal. So the design tries to, without going overboard, cover the worst-case scenarios.
I'm so sorry. Just a question and maybe, so the inside residential buildings, the coverage is confident?
Right now, we're saying that this analysis tells us that with 95% reliability or system availability, a portable will be able to talk inside of a residential home.
Is that because of Wi-Fi?
No.
No, okay.
It's because of buildings attenuate radio signals. So our signal on the street is greater than a signal inside this room, right? So you've got walls. In this case, it's probably not too bad. We've got windows, but if had no windows, it would be a lot worse. If we were in a basement, we probably wouldn't have any coverage. Construction is a big deal, right? This is wood, I think it's wood, or brick. Larger buildings with rebar or concrete are going to be difficult, you know, to get coverage. So we define a residential home as a two-story wooden home. And, you know, with 95% confidence, based on, you know, where they are in proximity to the tower and the construction, you know, that's going to depend whether you get the coverage inside that building or not.
So is, just because, Chief, what you said earlier about, in the video we watched, you mentioned that if that was outside, right, but if Sergeant Hendy, I think, were to go inside a building, and Chief Small, I don't know what your experience is with on the EMS side. I'm just, I'm trying to understand the no-poor coverage and the gray, and then what happens if someone is to go into a residential building, what that means for their signal based off of this map?
Based on now or based on after, if the tower was installed? Because right now, it's that. It's garbage coverage.
This is what it looks like today at this moment.
And the last map was if it would be installed, everything is now white. So coverage has increased.
So coverage has increased.
And those issues go away if you are-
So the green is in street only. So going inside a home in a green, you know, probably not going to be good coverage in general.
Got it. Okay. I get what you're saying.
And obviously, no coverage inside the gray.
Okay. Thank you.
And maybe this is not a question for you, but what, like, how do you assess, what is the steps you take to assess what the coverage is going to be? Like, how are you testing to ensure that, like, should we install this tower, like, the white we're seeing is what we're going to get?
Sure. So all of this coverage is based on a standard called TSB-88, which is pretty much followed by public safety around the country. So that allows consultants and radio manufacturers and radio shops to design radio systems, first by prediction, and then, secondly, after the system is in, by measurement. So TSB-88 tells you, this is how you model, and then when you go out to bid, or go out with an RFP and get proposals, the proposer's system, there's a way to test the system based on the criteria you use for the analysis, right? So the vendor's going to give you a coverage map. It's going to look similar to this, and they're going to have to guarantee that coverage because the standard will say, okay, if you design it using the standard, you're going to have to test it. You know, there's a test method to confirm all of that.
Thank you.
And essentially, the testing is breaking down the town into small grids, like quarter-mile-by-quarter-mile grids, and somebody's going to have to go to each grid and do a radio test. So if you probably would have several hundred grids here, but let's say it's 100 grids, you know, you'd have to have 95 grids pass to have an acceptable system based on the design.
I realize this, we're talking about public safety, but if the tower is built and the cell company comes in, puts their equipment on, what is the reach north? How far would that additional sub, how far north, all the way into Yarmouth?
Yeah. So I didn't bring any maps for the new system coverage. I'm just focusing on the east side of town. So here's Range Way and Chabig. So it shows you, you know, how far outside of Cumberland you're going to have some coverage. So the blue line. This is the Cumberland border.
Yep.
Right. So this means that you're going to have residential building coverage in, what is that, North Yarmouth?
Good, thank you.
Yeah, it's pretty localized. It's, this is for a portable now, right? So a portable is very low power. It's worn on a belt. It's got a public safety mic, which is, you know, usually carried on a shoulder. So, you know, you get limited coverage. If you had mobile coverage, which is the vehicle with a mobile radio inside a vehicle, you'll get more, you know, more coverage using that. But that ties, you know, so that ties you to a vehicle, right? So nowadays, public safety requires handheld portable for coverage because they're not in the car very much. All right. Any more questions?
No, I think for now, if you can continue on with your, if there was anything else you wanted to present, go for it.
Yep. So the last slide shows that the proposed site will provide reliable coverage in the eastern part of town using one site. It covers both the Forside and the 295 Route 1 area.
A quick search on the internet, Mike, is maximum about 25 miles under optimal conditions, but more likely 1 to 3 miles on cell frequencies, police frequencies, obviously a different scale.
Thank you.
Okay, I think unless there are any other questions from the council, we'll move into the public hearing, and then we'll come back for council. Oh! Come on up. I am so sorry, Gordon. I did not mean to jump behind you. Come on up.
Gordon Smith. I'm an attorney at Verell in Portland, and I live in Yarmouth. I represent Verizon. We also have Chip Fredette here who represents Verizon as well, and I can speak to some of the ordinance issues and maybe some of the big picture stuff. And if there are questions about, there was a question about, you know, what is going to happen for cellphone coverage if this tower goes up in terms of Yarmouth or anywhere else, we have propagation maps showing the proposed coverage that are in the packet, and Chip can run through those with you. But just to sort of take a step back on the existing and proposed conditions that we're looking at. So we saw the, those were sort of the modeling that Norm did for the public safety telecommunications. And he talked about, you know, Range Way and Chabig, but just, I'm not, this may be totally clear, but just, you know, I wasn't 100% clear on it, was that there is no option right now on the table for a tower to hold public safety equipment on the Range Way area. And you heard the chief talk about all of the efforts that he's gone through to try to get a tower built there, and none of those have worked out. So the modeling that Norm showed you with the Range Way option, that's not really, it's not a current option right now for, you know, there's no, there's no one proposing to build a tower there. And so the option that's on the table right now is this property at 14 Tuttle Road. That's what we're calling the White Pine property because that's where the church is, the White Pine Church. They own the property. That's why it's called, we're calling this the White Pine Site. I don't know, does that, I just wanted to make sure that the council understands what's being proposed. So that site at 14 Tuttle Road, which is right on 295, it will provide coverage for Middle Road, for- Middle Road, for 295, for Route 1, and for Route 88, and for the houses that live in those neighborhoods, and the businesses that live in those neighborhoods. So, and, so I want to talk about why this ordinance amendment is in front of the council, because I don't think that's been made clear. This, the 14 Tuttle Road parcel is in the low-density residential district. And as, as Matt pointed out, as Town Manager pointed out, antennas, which are defined term under the ordinance, are allowed in low-density residential, but telecommunications facilities are not allowed in low-density residential. And I've spoken with the planner about this, with Bridget about this. I think the better reading of the ordinance is that what's being proposed here, a tower, is, is a telecommunications facility. It's not simply an antenna. I think an antenna, under the ordinance definitions, is something that you put on another structure. So here, we're proposing to build a new tower, and under the ordinance definitions, that, you know, of a telecommunications facility, that's not currently allowed in low-density residential. And because we want to permit this by the letter of the law, the proper way to do that is, is to get this overlay district, this public safety telecommunications overlay district, on this one parcel where telecommunications facilities are in allowed use, and in addition, where there are different standards that apply to telecommunications facilities, where it's acknowledged that this is a public need. And in this particular case, the public safety equipment goes at the very top of the tower. And Verizon's equipment would go below that, and then other carriers, there's room for three other carriers, would go below that. So this town is getting the sort of priority position. And in order to do that, to get the tower height that the town and Verizon both need, the tower has to be 140 feet of tower, plus a 20-foot whip antenna on top for the public safety equipment. That's for the town's antenna, among other town equipment. So you have, and under the ordinance definitions, the tower is measured to the top of the antenna. So that's a 160-foot tower. And to, to clarify, in, in the low-density residential district, even if you're saying this is an antenna, you don't have, it's, the, the height limit is 140 feet. So you have 140-foot height limit for antennas in low-density residential. But what's being proposed in order for this equipment to work for the town is 140-foot tower with a 20-foot whip antenna on top, and your ordinance defines height for towers as including to the top of the highest antenna. That's 160 feet. So there are a couple of different reasons why we want to permit this to the letter of the law, so that, one, because that's how we want to do business, but two, because if it's challenged, if this is challenged by opponents that could tie this up in, you know, in court, in appeals, we want to make sure that we have everything done right, and so that the Verizon and the town's equipment can go forward and be built. So I'm going to, I'm going to just leave that there. If there are any questions, I want to have Chip come up and talk about the, the coverage question for the cell coverage, if you want to do that now. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
At one point, are we asking questions? So what I'd like to do is if there's any more presentation, we can finish up with the presentation from Verizon, and then I'd like to open up the public hearing, and then we'll do questions and council discussion after. If you have specific questions for anyone, we'll bring them all back up, if that works for you.
Yeah, I feel like asking questions before public discussion might be helpful, because maybe those would be helpful to them, but yeah, whichever.
Or if you have a specific question for...
I have specific questions about the RF emissions report, but whenever that time is best.
Is that thunder?
Wow. News has spoken. I will not ask the question.
That's two different things.
Mom is sending you signals.
Not for the speed.
That was a big boom.
But it's in there.
Let's, let's let Verizon finish up. We have a lot of folks to come up for public comment, and then, because I think there also might be follow-up questions that, that we could bring all our experts back up. Okay, back over to, to you, Gordon.
Yeah. So does the board want to, I mean, the council want to hear about the modeling for the proposed Verizon coverage? Is that what you want to hear right now?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay. I just also want to add, when we're talking about public safety, that, you know, I think the statistic is 80% of all 911 calls are initiated by cellphone. So in connection with the town's radio, you know, signal needing to be better, there's also a public safety component to increasing the Verizon signal, which is available to anyone who has a cellphone, regardless of their carriers.
Good evening, folks. Chip Fredette here, on behalf of Verizon Wireless, site acquisition agent for 25 years. Nobody has ever said, in any hearing I've ever been to, wow, it's a great place for a tower. It's never happened. Matt, do you have, do you have the ability to put up our propagation maps on the screen?
I don't. I don't know if I, I don't know if I do, Chip. Give me a few minutes to work on that.
Do you folks have a copy of our RF report in your packets there?
Yeah, we do.
All right, well, Matt's looking for that. I'm on Attachment A. It's essentially the first map, colored map, yellow, green, gray.
So background, 2013, 14, I had a couple of new projects issued to me, both in Cumberland. The first one, we finished fairly quickly over Valhalla. Bill Shane and I worked together at that time to develop that 100-foot monopole on the town's property, and I've been working on this one ever since. So it's been a long time coming. Do you folks have that map in front of you there? Okay. So akin to Norm's propagation maps, he shows you the public, public safety propagation maps. These, you've got multiple colors here, which identify different signal strengths. So the first map here, again, Attachment A, we call the site Cumberland 3, again, White Pine Church at Pastor Joe's property. The first map is titled Existing 700 megahertz LTE Coverage. So this is your four, essentially 4G coverage in Cumberland. The center of the, well, if you can see Range Way, center of the page, there's one site identified as simply named Cumberland, and the text below that word is 148 AGL, 148 feet above ground level. So that's our equipment on that SBA tower that Norm was referring to over on Range Way. So, and you can see the footprint of the service from that site, so green, the green color being the most, the strongest portion of that signal, and then tapering off into yellow, and then into gray, and then to white, where there's no coverage at all, or not reliable coverage. Cumberland 2 on the northwest side of town, of course, is the site that we did at Valhalla. It's a 97, 97-foot AGL, that, that tower's a 100-foot monopole. And again, the coverage from that site, green being the most robust coverage for you, 4G, and then tapering off to yellow, then into gray. But like Norm was saying, essentially, most of, most of the coastline of Maine is difficult to hit because the terrain, the terrain drops off down to the water. And so the site that we're proposing, virtually dead center of the page, if you will, above the icon of 295, again, Cumberland 3, the proposed, again, center line of our antennas will be 126 feet. And if you flip to the next page, Attachment B, you can toggle back and forth of those two pages, that'll show you the proposed coverage from the new site, in conjunction, of course, with the existing sites.
Can you just flag what the number changes are? Because I'm not...
Sure.
...seeing them. Like, it's showing 97, 97, 112.
Yep. So if you, we'll start with the center of the page with Cumberland 3, this proposed site, 126 feet, that's the centerline elevation of the proposed antennas, so above ground level. Yep. The top of the proposed tower is 140 feet. Again, as Gordy clarified, above that, the town would have its own 20-foot tall antenna. The tower itself, once again, will only be 140 feet tall. Our equipment will be below police and fire at 126, which serves, serves great for this location, because it's at elevation. Of course, the lower, the ground elevation you build your tower, the taller the tower would have to be.
The coverage difference is wild.
Again, going back to the left, to our oldest site in town, the Cumberland Site on Range Way, we built that in, I think, 1998. So the, essentially, the, the east side, essentially, the town of Cumberland hasn't seen an update since we worked together on the Valhalla site. Prior to that, it was 17 years since the town had anything done, and that was the SBA site. Actually, I think it was a company called Tower Ventures that built that originally. So one more time, the oldest site in town, Cumberland, we call it Cumberland, the lattice style tower on Range Way, Verizon's equipment's at 148 feet. That's, I believe that tower, I believe that tower's 160 feet tall. I could, I don't, I don't remember offhand. I don't believe where the, I don't believe Verizon's at the very top of that tower. The Cumberland 2 site, top left of the page, again, that was one that we did develop, so we are the top spot there. That's 100, only 100-foot monopole, and our equipment's at 97 feet. Lastly, of course, the proposed site tonight in front of you folks is what we call Cumberland 3, a, a proposed 140-foot monopole, with our equipment being second tier down, if you will, at 126. There'll probably be a lot of questions about, where else did you look? And again, there's, there's never a good place to put a tower. My job is to get direction from RF engineers like Avilio here, who prepare these maps for us. And from those existing coverage maps, they'll develop for us what we call a search ring, a search area. Say, geez, Chip, you know, we're lacking in coverage in this area of town. If you could find us a site in this particular polygon at a certain height, that would serve to, sorry, that would serve to either offload the capacity or provide the coverage that our subscribers need. And so then I take that map, and I go out and I look at the area, look at the zoning, and, and we look at any possible means of attaching antennas to an existing structure before building a new tower. Sure, sure.
What is the value, what is the value of that statement? You attach the tenants prior to putting up the existing structure?
Sure. So, so again, like Gordy was describing earlier, we have towers and we have antennas, right? We only build the tower unless we absolutely have to. If I can find a place to put, attach the antennas themselves...
Gotcha.
So church steeples, water tanks, rooftops, you name it. And we do that routinely. For example, we did, well, Matt's prior position in the Cape Elizabeth, we attached the antennas to one of PWD's water tanks in that town, and that was sort of a, that became difficult because there's no water in the tank.
Why?
So the argument was, well, it's not a water tank, because there's no water in it. Anyway, so in Yarmouth, we're on both of their water tanks. We're on countless rooftops downtown Portland. So in this instance here, Portland Water District does have a water tank, albeit a very low one, off Fairwood Lane, and that was one of my original attempts. They were willing, because this, we had just done a deal, down in Cape Elizabeth, it was the first one they'd ever done, and they were open to it again, and unfortunately, that parcel's landlocked, and that meant I needed to negotiate an access and utility easement from the Condoming Association next door. After about eight to 10 months of effort, it just didn't work out. We couldn't come to an agreement. So the idea of using that tank was a dead candidate, if you will. And since there are no other existing structures in and around this search area, we're forced to come before the town with a, with a raw land tower site. So I looked at a number of different parcels, and there's a, there's a map, and later in the package here, that you'll see some of my efforts. And in talking with Bill Shane one day, years ago, he mentioned that Pastor Joe was looking at purchasing this, this parcel. And so I talked to my engineer about it, and that was, I think, three years ago now. It took some time, but here we are, so. Oh, thank you.
Chip, can I just?
Sure.
I don't think you got to the...
No, not yet, no, no.
And I just wanted to say, just to follow along with what Chip's talking about, there's this, Matt, and I don't know if you want to pull this up, but Cumberland 3, OMP, right?
I can't see around the corner here. Which one is it?
Search ring, Cumberland 3 search ring.
He's driving.
Okay.
Yep.
There you go.
Thank you.
So this shows the history of Chip, basically, Verizon, looking at various sites that would meet the coverage requirements. And so, you know, the question, I think, you know, the council and the planning board asked, why is this, why is this site, why do we need to be at this site? And so the search ring that Chip was just talking about is the area of where a tower could go that would fill the gap in coverage and capacity. And, and this is a, these are notations that Chip put this together to show, within that search ring, here are the properties that I looked at and exhausted, and they all were not feasible sites until we got to the White Pine Church at 14 Tuttle Road.
Yeah, so going back to the, the idea of site acquisition and searching for a new, a new antenna site, when we get to the point at which we've exhausted the idea of co-locating antennas on an existing tower, or building steeple water tank or existing structure, and we're forced to look to build a new tower, the first thing we're going to look for is, what's a zoning allow? Second will be, well, the, the size of the parcel. And if you look inside the green polygon here, which is the search, search ring that, that the engineers have given me, the direction essentially for me to look, it's not etched in stone that we need to stay inside those lines, as you can see on the top right-hand side of the page there. I had looked at Broadco Farms, looked into the covenants of that, and of course, it was very restrictive. So we're looking for parcels of land that we can build the tower so that it's, one, able to meet tower setbacks, and two, so that it's as invisible as possibly can be. This map here, of course, is derived from the town's GIS program, and it's a handy tool for somebody like me, because I can, I can look at parcel ownership, parcel size, and zoning, kind of all in one, one fell swoop. So kind of combining all those variables that I need into one, into one map. And so you can see for yourself, you folks know the area as well as I do, that most of the parcels in this polygon and just beyond the edges of it are small house lots. For perspective, the subject site, the White Pine Church, center of the page, that's a 20-acre parcel. You'll be able to gauge better the size of some of these other ones, but the Portland Water District site, very much a postage stamp-sized lot, but since we're not, we weren't proposing to build a tower, only putting antennas on a tank, it didn't much matter to the size of the parcel. Now they're talking about building a tower, now it matters. And so I'm looking for the biggest parcel I can to bury it, hide it, and then meet the setbacks. Of course, I, I talked to Bill Shane about the town of Cumberland's two, two pieces of land, and he said, no way, and you folks probably knew that before I did, so. I spoke to some others, some of the larger parcels in this area, to no avail, and of course, the lead came in to talk to Pastor Joe, and, and it seemed to, seemed to work well.
Is there anything else that you...
No, happy answer questions, are we, from you folks, or the public?
Yeah, so we have some people who have been here for two hours, and I would love to give the opportunity to come up and have their moment, and then... to give the opportunity to come up and have their moment, and then we'll move into council discussion, and we will certainly bring you back up for questions.
Sure.
I just want to open the public hearing and give, give that opportunity. I'm also just gonna, I have a couple of printed copies in case anyone wants these materials that's sitting in the, if you want to look at the map and if you want copies, help yourselves.
I remember the RF, maybe?
Yes, yes.
The, the, uh, attachment one and attachment two, or?
Attachment A is the before. And attachment B is the after.
Is the after, yeah. Okay, we will officially open our public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience who would like to speak? Come on up to the podium if you would. If you wouldn't mind just telling us your name and where you live, please.
Hi, my name is Austin Reeves, and I live at 186 Forside Road. Verizon identifies churches as vulnerable and susceptible organizations that are in need of funds. They approach churches regularly, including St. Mary's on Forside Road, where my husband has served on the vestry for a number of years. White Pine was previously approached before the time at which they agreed to the arrangement. The bottom line here is that while this arrangement does benefit the town with the sharing of tower space for emergency communications, and it benefits the church, providing them with a stream of income that will allow them to move forward with their goals, Verizon is who stands to profit the most. Our town, and especially the Forside, are not locations that have sold out to large corporations in the past, and it would be a shame to make an exception in this case. Personally, my property would undoubtedly be affected the most by the construction of this tower, as I share a property line with the church. Our, our home is our largest investment, greater than any retirement account, investment account, business asset, or other. We paid over $1.3 million for our house. It's important to note that we are not entitled people, we're not people that moved here from a large city during COVID. We're a family with two full-time working parents. We have young children who are involved in this community and in the school district. My husband and I are both United States Navy veterans. We've owned three homes in Cumberland. Our first home was a very modest home on Farwell Avenue, and we purchased that home with modest incomes, and my husband was still in the Navy Reserves. The home where we now, the home we now own on Forside Road represents a major, major accomplishment for us as a family, and as already stated, a major financial investment. Not only are there a plethora of health concerns associated with cell phone towers and radio frequency emissions, but the presence of this tower will undoubtedly affect my property value as well as the property values of all butters, and additionally, devalue the aesthetic appeal of this pristine location known as the Forside. I understand the need for improved communications and support our public servants and their critical lifesaving efforts on our behalf. However, the greater point here is that our town as a whole is putting taxpayers in an extremely vulnerable position, health-wise and financially, and I do not feel as though it is in anyone's best interest when the folks on the other side are global corporations such as Verizon. I firmly believe that we are letting the need for emergency service communications overshadow the greater point here, which is that what is not needed is a Verizon cell phone tower. Thanks.
Thank you. Come on up.
My name's George Turner, 4 Carriage Road. My wife and I, Chris and I, have lived in the location for 47 years. I spent 22-day, 22 years on the, on the town council, 16 years on the town council and 22 years on the Board of Appeals. I think I've got a little something vested in this town, so has my wife. It's been interesting to me that as we've listened here tonight, we've heard "public safety," those words put together many, many times over. The FCC has published at least one publication where they suggest that .24 miles is the magic number to stay away from cell towers, as far as residential locations. Then it goes on to say that if you don't have, and if you, if you have no, the first instance is if you have no obvious physical problems, that quarter of a mile away is okay. If you have physical problems of one kind or another, half a mile away is a preferable distance. It's interesting, it says .24, .25 is a quarter of a mile. I'm kind of, it makes you a little suspicious when you hear that specific a number. Somebody came up with some kind of conclusion as far as that process is concerned. We hear inconclusive is the term used to suggest that most research has been inconclusive as far as the potential for harm to families. The fact that, the fact that we live where we do, I'm, Chris and I are within 100 yards of the previous speaker's house, so we're well within that quarter-mile distance. I made a couple of notes because I want to remember. As a council, you're elected to pay attention to the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens. That's what we elect you for. It becomes a juggling act potentially here over a desperate need that the police have to be able to communicate better and people's health. And if there's any question in your mind about the potential for bad, bad health coming from radiation, I think it's probably you ought to err in favor of property owners. Property values, I've been a real estate broker for 47 years, as we've lived in this property for all that time. I know something about property values, and the previous speaker was exactly right. There's no question about the fact that property values would be affected to some extent by this tower. No question at all. And some of the properties that aren't mentioned by the applicants are off Beach Road and over on that side of 88, and those houses are all million, $2-million houses that are well within a quarter of a mile of this tower. People are going to talk about the aesthetics of the tower. I don't, I'm not worried about the aesthetics of the tower. I could stand looking at it, but I sure don't want health effects from it. And the last thing that I want to mention is that after all of the years serving on various boards for the town, the one thing I have my finger still in is the Lands and Conservation Commission. And it was founded by the council a number of years ago to specifically consider problems with, potential problems with land use. And the very first line of the mandate suggests that the Lands and Conservation Commission should be consulted and asked for an opinion when it comes to use of land. Well, I was at the last planning board meeting when this was considered. The Lands and Conservation Commission, Mike Schwent is the chairman. Mike was never contacted. He had no idea until I contacted him by email about this proposal. At the very least, the Lands and Conservation Commission ought to be giving some credence to, one way or another, to the problems that may exist with this, this tower going where it's potentially going to go. And it's, I don't know, it's an oversight, or whether a staffer didn't inform Mike, but the point is, the Lands and Conservation Commission's made up of a whole bunch of subcommittees, and so to take a vote on what the recommendation might be to the council can't happen unless the Lands and Conservation Committee has a meeting, and there's no reason to have a meeting when you're not in, when you're not told about something upfront. The same kind of thing has happened before, and it, at the very least, it, I, I know it was undoubtedly an oversight, but at the very least, it doesn't look good. So that's all I have to say, and I know there are a lot of people who have a lot of other things to say. Thank you.
Can I ask a question, Matt? Isn't it for town-owned land that lands in conservation? Okay, so this is in town-owned land?
It's not town-owned land.
Okay, so it wouldn't be within LCC's purview? Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to come up to speak? Okay, thanks.
I'm Deidre Burgess, and I wrote the letter that you all received, and I appreciate the responses that I got, and I hope that everybody had time to read it and also to learn more through the links that were there. And I think, too, you did say that letter would be included in the minutes?
It will be. Any correspondence that folks included and asked to be included in the official minutes will be included in the official minutes.
Thank you, of course. I want to say a few words to those who did not receive the letter. This amendment we're talking about tonight ultimately paves the way.
Deidre, I'm so sorry, would you speak just a little bit more into the mic?
Yeah, just now everyone can hear you, but we'll give you your seconds back, too.
It ultimately paves the way for Verizon to have that 280-foot tower on, at 14 Tuttle Road. And certainly, nobody is arguing about public safety. We, we want our police and our citizens to be safe. Our concerns center, and I think we can work together to find some sort of solution, as my husband would say, a, not a win-lose, but a win-win. And our concerns, in the letter we outlined, centered around short and long-term health effects of radiation emitted by cell towers, diminished property values, that has been spoken when cell towers are present, of course, the aesthetics in a desirable neighborhood, as Austin pointed out, and environmental effects, there are those as well. I guess what I ask the town, is Verizon a trustworthy partner for this town? And I don't mean anything against individuals who work for Verizon, but the company itself. Our town created the overlay district on Rangeway, and from what I understood from Chip at the last meeting, the planning board meeting, Verizon was one of the partners, and Verizon backed out of that tower. I'd like, just to note, I know everybody says that's not a workable piece of property, but it is abutted by just acres and acres of forest and not a neighborhood. Verizon wants its shareholders, it warns its shareholders of risk, but not consumers and not neighbors. This is from their 10K filing. Quote, "Our wireless business also faces personal injury and wrongful death lawsuits relating to alleged health effects of wireless phones or radio frequency transmitters. We may incur significant expenses in defending these lawsuits. In addition, we may be required to pay significant awards or settlements." Does Verizon have insurance for damages from long-term exposure to radio frequency radiation? Insurers rank cell phone towers and 5G radiation as high-risk, comparing the issue to lead and asbestos. What happens when satellite, which is very up-and-coming, makes cell towers obsolete in a few years? I think my husband will probably speak a bit about satellite radios. And we already know that a lot of sites have been explored, but how many sites have been explored without Verizon as a partner or another cell phone company? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Come on up.
William Lloyd, 10 Carriage Road, 41 years, not 47. I'm a little late catching up on this process here. I created a presentation, if you don't mind, I'd like to give you guys a copy of it, and I'll, I promise to skip half of it, because it's been covered already. Let me approach.
Here, we'll pass it out, and then you can, Max Westen.
I recommend that we do not approve this zoning change, and to cut right to the chase, if there's a way to separate the public safety need from the cell phone need, that would be something I think this group should pursue. I would like to say something about the property values, and by the way, the things I'm talking about here, there's a reference page in the back, so there's references for all of these paragraphs. Two-and-a-half percent to 10% property value reduction, in some cases, 20%, and the Department of Housing and Urban Development classifies towers as nuisances, that's their word, necessitating appraisers to adjust home valuations. So one of the things I'd ask later is, if this gets approved, what are you going to do about our property values for those of us who live in the neighborhood, because you have to do something? The health concerns has been covered, I will leave that as it has. I, I'd like to consider an alternative to the cell, please, and that is the smokestack on Wyman Station. And the reason that that's a good choice is that it's 150 feet higher than the highest point of the tower that's being proposed here tonight. And here's how I got there, 70 feet elevation for the Pine Church property, 180 feet or a little less for the tower, gets us to around 250. The stack is 421 feet, so we get about 150 feet higher coverage on the Wyman Stack than we do on the Tuttle Road property. There's a picture in the back of your presentation there that shows what it would look like, and it's almost invisible to have all those cell attachments on the smokestack, as opposed to a big, fairly ugly prominence in Cumberland. There's a note here about LD 1145, and I only mention that as, it was passed in May by our state legislature. The spirit of that law is, we want to enable residents to be involved in decisions like this, and wherever possible, we want to privilege the residents to have the advantage over large corporate interest. This actually, this law actually has to do with mobile homeowners and mobile homes to collaborate and buy a property. But the spirit of the law is, we want our residents in the state to be privileged in decisions like this. Let's see. So let me get to what I would ask the council to do. First of all, it says, we urge the planning board, my error there, I realize this is the council. First, deny, delay, find an alternative, and I think the alternative is to separate the public safety need from the cell need. Create some kind of justification for not pursuing industrially-zoned alternatives or the big forest that was just discussed. Make decisions that reflect Maine's community values, which I just talked about. Commit to making fair reductions to effective property values. That's number five. My, I was talking to my son about this, he says, he knows of places where towers have been disguised as trees, so if it has to go in there, make it look like a pine tree. Or maple, whatever you like. And, let's see. And, let's see. Those are, those are the key points. I, I thank you for your time, and thank you for your consideration, the opportunity to speak with you.
Thank you, William.
Thank you.
Who's next?
Hi, my name is Diane Potvin. I live on 2 Heritage Lane. It's the far corner with Carriage Road. And I'm speaking mostly from a public health perspective. My background, my undergraduate degree is in health administration and planning. I also have an MBA. I worked in the nonprofit sector as a medical researcher, as well as a public health liaison, as well as foreign nasdaq-traded company as a regional vice president. So I've been in multiple areas. I appreciated your discussion about the EV chargers and your conservative approach to managing the town's perspective. It also brought me back to junior high, when Seabrick Station came in and really had us 13- and 14-year-olds convinced that there was no other option than having a nuclear reactor to succeed in the future, that our town would die. Obviously, there were many options, and alternative energy has thrived, and nuclear reactors no longer exist. In addition, Chip pointed out that there are options. I'm not sure which secret properties. I have an idea, town-owned properties that have been rejected, and we may want to bring those up for consideration. I would like to point out that the International Association of Firefighters, since 2004, has opposed cellphone towers on their stations. I believe that is because they sleep there. I personally do not know if I am going to be a long-term resident. It has nothing to do with the cellphone towers. It has to do with where my family's located. But I care about the stem cells of the people in the area. I worked with radiation oncologists and sat in on peer review meetings from Boston to Hartford to Scarborough, Maine, and I know what radiation can do. We don't have studies of what the RF emissions are going to be from cellphone provider, added upon provider. On the growing brains of children, the American Academy of Pediatricians has come out with a warning about how vulnerable our children are. There have been study after study, and they have determined that there are neurobiological effects on children. And it's because of the sizes of their heads, their bones are thinner, it goes to their brains, it gets to their stem cells. This is a major public health issue, and I am truly concerned for the children that live, and it, and they're expanding the areas internationally. The United States range is 10 times that of Russia, China, and India. They, their, their levels are 90% lower than we allow for our population base. In addition, the Los Angeles County School District Office of Health and Safety has developed a cautionary level of RF radiation 10,000 times lower than that recommended by the FCC. And the American Pediatric Association has identified cellphone towers as hotspots for the stem cells of our children. It is a public safety issue from many perspectives. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak?
Madam Chairman, members of the Town Council, Mike Schwinn, Chair of the Lands and Conservation Commission. I thought I heard a side conversation going on about whether or not this pertained to the Lands and Conservation Commission. I suspect it does, because part of our ordinance says on the 3014 Part I, "Conduct research in conjunction with the planning board into local land use areas that are being considered for development." The church land, as I listened to the tapes from the planning board, is being considered for development. The discussion was for the lot to be split into three parts. One part for the church, some to be sold for development, and also for, a third part being for adding of the tower. The other part where it brings the Lands and Conservation Commission into this is, one of our responsibilities is dealing with the vistas within the town. You've heard enough discussion about the towers impacting on how it's going to look from people's properties. Well, that's part of the vistas, and if we're left out of the discussion, we can't do our job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Please?
Hello, I'm Jack Burgess. I live at 6 Carriage Road on one of the young ones on the street. We've only been there 29 years. In every decision, you need to look at the costs and the benefits. And we heard about a lot of benefits from the Chief of Police and his radio engineer, but I'm wondering about the costs. I'm wondering about the cost, this decision that the town is asking to be borne by the We've heard about loss of property values and different amounts thrown out tonight, anywhere from 2% to 10% to 20%. I've read about an average of 7.5%. And to kind of put that in perspective, that's almost $50,000 in lost property value for somebody who owns a home $650,000. So if you multiply that by 10, all of a sudden, $50,000 goes to a half a million dollars. That's a big cost for the abutters to bear. Another is a loss of aesthetics. I'm going to see the cell tower out my front window. I'm going to see it every morning when I go outside to go to work, to walk, and that's, that's a big loss. We talked about loss of wild, of wildlife and natural resources. We have seen, out the same front window, moose, deer occasionally walking into our yard. This spring, we've seen fox, a coyote, we believe, raccoon just last week, an opossum. There's a lot of wildlife there that's going to be disturbed by development. You ride along Route 88, and lots of times you see foxes running from the Broad Cove side across Route 88 into the church property. Another loss that we've heard about is, or let's say, an increase in health risks tonight. And I'm not going to go any further in what people have said, but we all understand there's increased health risks. Take, for example, I'm just going to add one about cell phones, just an individual cellphone, that we've been, there've been studies that show that cell phones, if somebody puts one in their pocket, can lead to loss of male fertility. And one thing we have seen, it doesn't need a study, you just read and talk to your neighbors, that there's been a drop in the fertility rates and, and increase in prostate cancer. And you take one cellphone, but what if you take a cell tower? And not just one cell tower company, but I heard availability for at least two or three on the same cell tower. Those are big health risks. Now, my wife mentioned about win-win situations, and so we are, want to try to help the town find, or increase their, their public safety reach with their radios. What I haven't really heard a lot about tonight is some alternatives, such as satellite phones. And in fact, if you go on the Verizon site, they have satellite phones, an Iridium handheld satellite phone. There are satellite radios, portable radios that are available. I understand that Amazon is going to be investing billions of dollars in a competitive satellite system to the current Starlink system now. And so I wonder if we're shortsighted in thinking about putting a cell tower in where they're going to be, this whole industry is going to evolve tremendously in a short amount of time. Are there other alternatives? So could there be some satellite radios that the town purchases to help in these dead zones? Also, other locations, we heard about the, the water tower on Fairview Lane, I believe it was, and that Verizon said they couldn't get access across from the condos. I'm wondering if the town approached them, would that same condo association have a different view versus a cell tower? I just want to end with one last thing. I thought maybe there can be some kind of compromise. I saw some good coverage. It wasn't great, but it was good with a combination of the Shabig and the town property on Range Way. And I guess one last thing I just wanted to say is, can we have a show of hands of how many people are against change of the ordinance here tonight? Thank you.
Thank you. Other folks? Come on up.
Hi, good evening. I'm Jim Ballinson, 30-year resident of Friar Lane, so probably within the quarter-mile range of the tower. With some reluctance after hearing all of the, the neighbors and especially the abutters to the property and their very heartfelt concerns about the site, I will speak in support of it. The public safety need is, is crucial, and the reality is, there will not be a tower at the site to put an antenna on without there being a cellphone carrier. So I think the reality is, you're not going to get a public safety antenna at the site without a cellphone carrier. Certainly, if the Wyman Station is an option for the, the town's public safety antenna, if that hasn't been explored, it should be. But I think if that was an option, I suspect we would have, we would have heard about it. I am, have a fair amount of familiarity with cellphone antennas in my role at the Cumberland Church, which has had cell antenna in its steeple for close to 20 years. So I'm very familiar with the issues. The church evaluated the safety concerns before we allowed the antenna, or two antennas, there are two carriers, to go in our steeple. I think Verizon does need to address the safety concern to the satisfaction of the town and to address the concerns of the immediate neighbors. I think Verizon also submitted some information in the packet. I didn't read it super closely, but that was addressing the property values issue, and I think that needs to be explored a little bit further by the council to really understand what the impact would be. I think we also need to see some illustrations of what the tower would look like on the site, because it really depends where it's situated on the site, what the sightlines would be from, you know, from various perspectives. So I think that would be important for the, the town to consider. Finally, I, I think a major concern is also cellphone coverage, which is, is horrible in the Forside area. It's horrible on Friar Lane. Unfortunately, we're not Verizon subscribers. We heard talk about that there would at least be 911 coverage for the other, other subscribers, other cellphone carriers from this tower. I don't know if we would also address cellphone coverage for people who are with other, other carriers. Hopefully, there'll be some other carriers that would, would want this site as well. But I think that is a concern. Increasingly, many of us do not have landlines anymore, and cellphone coverage is crucial, especially when there's a power outage and you can't count on like Wi-Fi service through your internet provider. So I will be a voice speaking in support of this proposal.
Thank you, Jim. Someone else like to come up and speak? Please?
Hi. My name is Ivana Tarling, and I lived in my home for the past 37 years. I love where I am because of its surrounding beauty. No box stores, no McDonald's, no commercial whatsoever, town, what is it called, town market, which is a beauty of this town. I just want to talk about health. I know people had mentioned it, but I just want to go a little deeper to it. So when microwave oven is on, it remits radio frequencies between 300 megahertz to 30 gigahertz. Cell towers have the same radio frequency range between 800 and 1,900 megahertz. Same as microwave oven on. Impact of living within quarter-mile of cell tower on humans, especially children, trees, animals, you think of any living, is like living inside a microwave oven that is on. 24/7, 365 days a year. You can imagine what it does to one's body. People had been, it's, it's been proven that it, it affects people's health tremendously. Residents of our town supported many things since I moved here 37 years ago. For, for example, purchasing Twinbrook, purchasing Broad Cove Preserve, Night Spawn. We built a new town hall, brand-new fire department building, and recently, $51 million dedicated to new school and probably a million dollars dedicated to athletic track. When we have money for all these wonderful projects, but we cannot accommodate police and fire department with a radio tower. That's all the town chief is asking for, better radio connection. He is not asking for a cell tower. He's asking for a better radio connection. There is, we need to explore the possibility between Range Way and Shabig Tower and, and improve on that, spend money, as a town should do, spend money on public safety. That's what the police chief is asking for. He's not asking for a cell tower that is destroying people's lives. So I talked about the two parcels on Range Way that we can explore again and, and help chief police finance. and help chief police finance that project. We don't need a Verizon corporation coming here to our town and dictate what we need, what we want. Because all, the bottom line essentially is for them to make money. They don't care about our health or our real estate values or the environment. They don't care about that. Bottom line for them, and obviously for White Pine Church, is to make money. And we are the victims of this system. And I oppose to building that ugly thing in my backyard. This isn't essentially going to be built next to my house. I am second house behind Austin's house. We need to find compromise. And as I said, we are a rich town, and we can finance this for the chief of police and help him and his officers to get a better radio connection, not a cell connection. Thank you.
Thank you, Ivana. Would anyone else like to come up and speak? Okay, I will close the public hearing. Thank you all so much for not only your passion, but also for being here. I think we'll open it up for council discussion. And if anyone has questions for any of the specific presenters, hopefully you're willing to come back up to the podium. One thing I think that we just have to frame the dialogue with is that, just as a heads up, under federal law, municipalities are not allowed to deny based on health concerns. And I just want that information to be out there because it's just, there are certain times when our hands are tied on certain topics. And just on the RF health part, we are not allowed to cite that as a reason. And I just want to put that out there, so. Sure, if you want to ask, absolutely. I am not a lawyer, but our town manager might be able to answer the question.
My documentation documents Bar Harbor as having a moratorium on cell towers due to health concerns. So I'm not sure how they got it on the law, but they did.
I think Mr. Smith, who spoke earlier, the attorney, can speak on that better than I could, quite honestly.
I didn't ask him that. I really don't want to.
I'm just, I can't opine on the law, except that that's what the federal statute says.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That would not be appropriate.
I don't have that information. That is interesting information. Opening it up to council discussion, questions? Anything that you want to do a follow-up with? Oh, okay. Jeff, and then Denise.
You can go first. You know, I guess I've heard a lot of the comments of the citizens, and they brought up a lot of good points. And, you know, it's, obviously, this is an issue that's plagued public safety for decades. And it hasn't gotten any better. So I guess my question of the two chiefs in the building and the town manager is, why twenty-plus years are we still, we haven't resolved this issue?
Chief, do you want to weigh in on that? He's been working on it longer than I have, except I know they've, I think the best way you could say it, they've tried it with multiple different partners, and it has not worked out.
Right, that's really the short story, counselor. For the nine years that I've been here, we have been constantly trying. And I think Chief Small can speak to my time, his time before I was here, to find a solution. And so we have engaged with a number of different parties who wanted to speak to the town about the potential of building a tower so that we could improve our radio system, and that hasn't worked. And now we have a party who's willing to collaborate with us on this. Without Verizon, there is no tower to put public safety antennas on. It's just as simple as that for me. And so certainly appreciate all the passion and the concerns for the members of the community that are here. But that's, I'm being very upfront and very transparent about my concerns and the fact that we have a party who's willing to build a tower on private land to put our radio equipment on the top of it and solve a problem that I've personally been working on for nine years.
Yeah.
For you, Denise?
I've got a lot of questions. One, Jim is right. It would be nice if we had a plat map or some sort of exact location of where this would be. I'm looking on Google Maps Satellite right now, looking at the scale. And I mean, depending on where you put it, the six hundred, oh gosh, where's the number? Six hundred eighty foot distance, which is the highest RF emissions of the tower, is in a forest with no homes in its radius. So I would be curious, where exactly is this as we're looking at surrounding neighborhoods? Is it hidden completely in the tree line? What would it look like outside of someone's home? Based on my own research from unbiased sources, the issue with property values seems to be if you can see it out of your window from your home, if it is visible from your home. Will it be visible? Will it be obscured by trees?
Just to answer at least one part of your question, the tower would be located in the center of that twenty acre parcel. And it's a wooded site, but, you know, the trees don't grow a hundred and forty feet tall. And let me just also say that, you know, even if the town council decides to rezone the property, we have to go, the project has to go through planning board review, at which point there's visual impact assessment that has been, that was submitted to the planning board. So there's, those questions of like the site-specific questions are addressed during the planning board site plan review process.
And as far as, I mean, looking at the write-up that you provided, the, of course, we heard from, you know, a recommendation of ten thousand times lower than the FCC's recommendation for emissions, but it is a tenth of the permissible exposure. And that does not take into effect attenuation from trees and other things like that. So from yours, aside from the planning board, just from permitting and like federal law, and knowing that we are not in control of that on the municipal level, you still have your own process going through federal law to get, and I'm guessing state law as well, to get permitting. And you have to check boxes and prove that you're within all applicable limits, like every tower you guys have built. I'm sure you've built many.
That's correct. I mean, there's, the FCC regulates cell tower emissions. And that's why, under the Federal Telecommunications Act, it explicitly says states and, you know, municipalities are prohibited from regulating the placement of cellphone towers based on health effects because the federal government has determined that that's something that they're going to do.
And this ordinance change is not to, whether or not to allow a tower, it is a public safety overlay.
That's correct.
For the fourth parcel that we would have done, because we've done this three times before in that same ordinance. One question for probably Chief Fromzy. Satphones, those were mentioned, is that viable? Is that something that you can integrate into your existing call center infrastructure? Is it cost prohibitive? You know what our budget looks like.
I actually don't know the answer to that question, but I'm hoping that Norm might be able to speak to that. Norm, is that something you could enlighten the group on?
So right now, there is no system out there that is satellite-based for public safety communications. We've got, well, for lots of years, emergency management folks, state level, county level, have been using Iridium phones for emergency management communications. But, you know, it's a cumbersome phone. You don't always get locked in. And, you know, for coverage, you, it's essentially zero coverage inside of the building, right? So the building shields, you know, the satellite signal. So looking forward, talking to manufacturers, looking down the road, we don't see any satellite-based public safety communications. It's all going to be terrestrial-based.
Thank you. And given that this is also, we are talking about a cell tower in the scheme of this, but mentioned, you know, eighty percent of calls for help are by cell phones. And this is also talking about within residences and on the street as well. This isn't just talking about public safety, even though, yes, that is what we're here to talk about. But it's on a cell tower. So it's not like we're going to ask members of the community to go buy satphones and stand outside to, you know, be able to call the police. So I'm just, I'm taking everything everyone said and trying to weigh it and see what is feasible and what is not. And I think that's the only specific questions I have, but I'm sure I'll think of more. Oh, wait, sorry. In our packet, there was that huge document about Real Estate Consultants of New England and the survey that, you know, they sent to one hundred forty-six communities in fifteen states, population of, you know, thirteen forty-five million people, to assessors and realtors, asking if they were aware of any property value loss or anything like that. And they all answered with no. However, this survey was from like two thousand nine. I, again, just internet sleuthing, looking at what things are selling for in existing, the existing vicinity of towers. In other towns and towns in Maine in general, and things, especially in Cumberland, are selling at or above asking price regardless of location. But do we have any more modern information or surveys that have come out regarding property values in the last decade or so?
Yeah, two thousand nine was a recession, so coming off the edge of a recession.
Yeah. And I think there was a two thousand seven in here, two thousand six, two thousand eight. So this is kind of old data that's being referenced in our packet. Just wondering if you know of anything newer, Matt?
I do not have any newer studies that have been performed.
I was curious, just on the data side. I think there's some information about how many people travel on two ninety-five every day, right? Do you have those numbers up?
No.
It was kind of old. I think it was twenty fourteen.
Twenty thousand something.
Or something, but I was just curious, Chip. Not necessarily for the radio purposes, but I worry about accidents that happen on two ninety-five. And what was the stat about E nine-one-one calls? Like are people, is there a delay or is there a marked between people who've gotten into an accident on two ninety? And we have a former state trooper over here too. I don't know if.
Well, you drop it right by the Falmouth Common Line. Watch your service, and you drop. You'll go from three bars down to one, zero, right at the Falmouth Common Line.
And that goes all the way up until?
No, it's just, I think it's about a mile stretch.
Once you get past Story Brothers, it comes back into it.
Yep.
Those stories.
Counselor Thorson, I'm sorry, there was the study on, from Ryan, New Hampshire, that was after the survey. That was done in two thousand nineteen, two thousand eighteen.
I did see that. I know that it had referenced as backup data, though, this same survey. So I, it was on my list of things to try to figure out on my own, and then it just fell through because of my day job. I'm going to Google right now while people are asking questions.
Counselor Thorson, or Counselor Philson, I'm not sure who asked the question about traffic counts, but I have from our friends at Verizon, some numbers from two ninety-five Route One. This shows Route One twenty-two, twenty-two numbers at six thousand six hundred and thirty vehicles per day. It is twenty-fourteen numbers for two ninety-five, but it is twenty-seven thousand two hundred and eighty vehicles per day. Forside Road gets about three thousand vehicles per day, and Middle Road about three thousand vehicles per day.
Is that DOT, that's DOT data, right? M dot.
This is DOT data, yes.
Thanks.
Go ahead, Andrew, you have something.
Andrew, go for it.
I didn't have anything.
Go. Please, Mike, go.
Chief, have you looked at the end of Powell Way on, off of Middle? In other words, the road that runs between Main Specialty Stone and Story Brothers? We own all that, all the way to the track. I don't know if that was ever considered or?
I believe that the third company, third company that we talked to that came and talked with town manager Sturgis and I about building a tower on town-owned land by the Cumberland, the Shabig Transportation Lot, had looked at that spot initially and then found the spot over by CTC Lot to be a better location for them. And we, again, were excited to potentially have a partner to collaborate with. And they left us to go and find a carrier. They said we would need to find a carrier that would commit to going on this tower. Before we built, we're going to go do our due diligence, and we'll be back in touch with you. And never heard from them again.
Thank you.
Sure.
Andrew.
Sort of on that point, this might be more of a question for the radio frequency engineer person. But that, I'm guessing like that would cover like two ninety-five, maybe Route One. It would leave eighty-eight just topography-wise still in a dead zone.
Yep.
You know, this morning, I was driving back on eighty-eight. Like you said, you know, basically the Cumberland Falmouth Line, you know, call started to get, I couldn't hear the person. You know, came in spotty, and then, you know, that was basically it. You know, if I walk outside of my house, I can't make a cellphone call if I get outside my Wi-Fi to, if I need help. I'm, you know, either running back in and hoping that I have the Wi-Fi or I don't really know what the other option, you know, banging on people's doors that hopefully have something off eighty-eight. So that's my big concern with all this is the cellphone coverage aspect of it for needing to call, you know, either chief or their people of what happens then. The comment was made that most people are going away from landlines and all now. If we could put it on Wyman, the power plant, that'd be fantastic. I have to look at that thing already. It's already ugly. Some little, you know, cell towers up there would be fantastic. It might, you know, brighten it up a little bit. But I don't know if that is, you know, a good idea where you think about it, but then when you actually get into the details, you know, it's prohibited because of whatever reason. I'm not sure if that's been looked at, but it'd be good to know if that is close enough. There was something that said about, you know, I think maybe Bob, you brought it up, of twenty-five miles, ideal world. In reality, it's one to three. You know, I think we need to go with the reality numbers as opposed to the ideal world numbers.
I can speak partially to the power plant. I believe I've heard conversation in the past, but I can confirm with the town manager, if it'd like me to, that that's not an option for us. And I also would ask our radio engineer for his input on the fact that even if that was an option for us, that tower results in that radio path shooting directly over open water. And I know that the farther you put a radio signal over open water, it can create interference issues just because of skips across the water. And the more I talk, the more you'll realize I know nothing about this. But we've been talking about the fact that even Shabig is very helpful and limited scope, but we do lose power coming across. but we do lose power coming across the water. So, I'm, I'm happy to confirm what I believe to be true, that that's not a site for, not a possible site for us anyway. But even if it was, I think there are issues with the fact that it comes all the way across the, the cove for us.
I can address the issue about Route 88. So, it's true, if you look at the, the Verizon's, the cellphone propagation maps, that the service that's projected, it doesn't increase much on Route 88. It's, this location would not markedly increase the capacity or the coverage on Route 88. But, and that's for the cellphone signal. But for the, the town's public safety equipment, we saw from the town's radio frequency engineer that there would be a significant increase down to the water. So that, and that would include Route 88. And I would also say, you know, it, there, with the cell signal, just looking at that by itself, on Middle Road, on 295 and on Route 1, substantial increases in coverage and capacity. So, I would say that the principle of not letting the perfect be the enemy of the good would apply, even though this, this cellphone site doesn't solve everyone's problems. It, it provides coverage where there's, everyone knows there's a gap along those corridors.
Andrew, and then Denise.
So, you guys sit on her left side because she's going this way.
Your next up after Denise.
I'll try not to forget.
So, a question with that, on Attachment F that we have, where it says Cumberland 3, 700 megahertz LTE sector footprints with proposed site. Most of the foreside is green. I mean, that's saying the Cumberland, and the Cumberland 3 is, is green.
Tell me, I'm sorry, Attachment F?
Attachment F.
Yeah.
Yeah, because the other ones, if you look at, you know, E, it's before, before Cumberland 3 would be in there. And then the, you know, D through A have different levels. And so that's, what's the difference then of, what is that attachment? Because that, just looking at it, it's just like, oh, 88's, you know, the foreside is like.
Yeah.
Except for a few little bits, it's fantastically covered. But you're saying that it wouldn't, and the other attachments, you know, are questionable on that.
I'll, I'll give you like a two-sentence broad answer. And then we have the engineer here to give you the actual answer. These are footprints, so they don't talk, when Attachment E and F are the footprints that the different, you know, that the exist, E is with the existing towers, F is with the proposed tower. What areas will be best served, you know, are going to be most served by those towers? But, that green that you see represents the footprint of the new proposed tower, but it doesn't say anything about the, the strength of the signal.
So, can you just clarify footprint versus, like, how, what is footprint defining as? Because I would see footprint as, you know, the base of the tower is a footprint. So, I, I'm not.
Footprint of the signal.
Right.
Good evening, how are you?
Hi.
I'm Ivelio Sotolongo with C-Square on behalf of Verizon. Are you looking at Attachment F?
Yes, sir.
Matt, are we able to put that up on the screen, just so folks that are here can?
So, attachment, you have multiple attachments, and you have so, oh, okay, all right.
This one says F.
It's, it's going to take me a moment, so I'll, I'll catch up.
Okay. So, you, you do have multiple attachments. The, so I think, what I'm going to say first is, the first attachments you have are coverage-based. The green represents excellent coverage. The yellow represents good coverage. The border of the green is to neg 85 dBm, which is a unit of measurement of signal strength. So, that shows you where you have excellent coverage and where you have good coverage. Those are the first few attachments you have up to Attachment D, I believe. And then we go to the attachments you were referring to. There, you see the colors extend further out. Perhaps you noticed that. That, that is a best server plot. And what that plot tells us, it tells us that you have connectivity between neighboring sites and the proposed site. So you can hand over, you have a connection. You hand over at less than neg 95. So you have excellent is green, yellow is good. But by the time you get to the edge of the yellow, your cellphone is looking for another site to hand over to. So what that plot is showing you, is showing you that you have the ability to connect, to hand over to neighboring sites that are located in the vicinity of the proposed site. So, you're filling up a void that exists today with this new proposed site.
Is a paint charge, right?
Yeah.
Bailey?
Oh, sir, so it was Denise next, and then Bailey.
Just looking through the packet on my phone, I'm sorry. So, am I understanding this correctly, that by adding, which, this is called Cumberland 3, correct? The proposed site?
Yes.
By adding that, you are also improving the capacity of the other Cumberland and the Yarmouth 3?
Yes.
Because they're basically, like what you're talking about, like a standing-off signal?
That's right.
Like, it's, it's, everything is working better by adding additional.
You're correct. And you're taking away the strain that the existing sites have today because of the lack of that proposed site. You have a void in that area. And near the edge of the coverage of the existing sites, they're trying to, they're trying to, the phone is trying to attach to those. But eventually, it gives up, it can't. The signal strength is not, is not strong enough for that attachment to take place. So you take away capacity, excess capacity, that the existing sites are serving today, that is better served by the proposed site.
Follow-up.
Yep.
Like, we all know Cumberland and, you know, Yarmouth, North Yarmouth, we're all developing all the time. Lots of new residential developments. Do you have projections or an idea of if this was not installed? Is there going to be a degradation on the whole of everyone as population increases?
Mm-hmm. As the population increases, the strain that I mentioned on the existing sites increases as well. And Verizon has things that they can do. They can change radios and try to keep up. But eventually, that void continues to put a stress on your existing network. And, you know, the customers see it in, lack of throughput, a lot more difficult to connect on those yellow areas that I showed you before, on those coverage plots.
Thank you.
Yep.
I think it was Bailey, and then Bob, and then Jeff.
Sorry. The existing cell towers, I believe, do we know the address of those or location of those?
Currently in town?
Yeah.
The, well, besides Rangeway?
Okay. The Rangeway one, what would be the exact address? Do we know?
It's not an address. It's, it's, there's no public road. It's, it's a Rangeway, which is a public access.
Okay.
It's, it's off of Middle Road in between Harris Road.
Okay. And then?
Drive there with a, with a truck. And then the other one's on Valhalla.
And then, looking at the land lot, it's 20 acres. And you said it was going to be propped right in the middle of the lot. What is the distance to the abutter? The first initial abutter, if you were to plop it right in the middle? I know, but do we know the exact distance?
Yes. The first thing I need to be doing is listening to these questions.
I'm, I'm sorry. Can you repeat the question, please?
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand what is the exact distance or a rough estimate of the distance between the cell tower location and the first existing abutters property?
Now, we.
Less than 900 feet.
Okay, very good.
Well, it couldn't be less than 900 feet, because isn't the lot 20 acres? And you said you were putting it in the middle of the lot. So wouldn't it be more than 900 feet?
I don't have the site plan with me. Okay, fire away. I have to look later, but I'll, I'll, I'll take that, sure. It's in the center of the 20 acre parcel.
That was to my neighbor across the street. Probably closer to Austin. You have it in the packet. You should have had it in the packet, which is information that hasn't been given to us that we have to come to the town and ask. Bridget has the packet.
Well, I have the packet too. I'm just asking a number to them. So I appreciate your feedback. I'm just trying to understand, is 800 feet the number we're going with here?
I'd, I'd want to look for you.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, can, so we have, that information is in, we submitted a whole site plan application to the planning board initially, before this rezoning question came up.
Okay.
And, so that information about where the abutters, their parcels, their lots.
Yep.
The distances, that's all in the site plan application that was submitted to the planning board. If, it's somewhere in the town's files. It was not in the board's, the town council's packet tonight. I, unfortunately, I don't have a copy of it right here. But, the.
Okay, then I'm going to grab the planning board packet as well, which will have that information of the site plan.
Do you, are you guys able to grab? It was for the June 17 meeting?
Yeah, I have it here.
Is that something that could be put up on the screen, Matt?
I'm trying to effort it right now. It's not posted on the website. I have to grab it from the packet, so it's going to take me a little bit of time to do that. Plus, I've got battery issues right now, so it'll, we're, we're in play. What type of charger you got, Matt? Oh, it's just a double-A dead battery.
Oh.
That's not that kind.
There is no site plan review packet in this agenda.
Oh, it's a triple-A, it doesn't need a double-A. All right, thanks, Sean.
Town website strikes again. Give me what I need.
Thank you, Tag. 800 feet. Six, he said six hundred?
Yeah, I'm going to send all of you guys the screenshot right now.
Sorry, I'm just calculating in my head here.
Ms. Douglas?
Yeah.
Is the, is the question related to the distance that the, the radio frequency emissions are correlated to?
No, I'm just more so trying to understand the visibility. I think, I think candidly, my struggle is just talking out loud to the council and to everyone is just, I think, there's never an ideal location for a cellphone tower, right? You want to optimize based on opportunity, dance partners, all of the things to maximize your efforts, right? And so I look at it like, okay, let me look at the other cellphone towers located in town and understand the distance to their abutter, to understand if that makes the most sense for us. I don't know that we are ever going to find a lot that's going to make everyone happy in the town of Cumberland. And I think what the struggle becomes is understanding, what is the visibility for an abutter? Like, what, if I'm looking at the, am I able to see the tower? I think, like, anyone that's abutting that residence is, is obviously going to come to the table with concerns about visibility, right? Like, that is never something I want to put in front of someone else, because I would be upset too. So, trying to understand the reality of it, right? Like, what are we seeing? What am I looking at? And I don't have a clear picture right now to understand what it is they're looking at. And so, go ahead.
So, part of the site plan application is a visual impact assessment.
Okay.
Which is a series of photo simulations from different viewpoints. And, the viewpoints are, that the planning board looks at are public viewpoints. They're not from private property, so it's along the various roads and public, publicly accessible areas. But, the site, that's something that the planning board would look at. Is this site appropriate for a cell tower based on a whole bunch of criteria, including?
So these are all the abutters?
Scenic, scenic impacts.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I, I think that, from a procedural standpoint, I mean, I understand, you know, the, the council is looking at, should we rezone this property? But that granular, that level of visual impact assessment will occur at the planning board stage, where the planning board would say, you know what?
Yeah, but I'm not going to, I'm not going to perpetuate a problem to the planning board if I don't feel comfortable with it. And I think that's the reality of the situation, right? Like, I respect that that is what happens at that level, but I'm also looking, I look at it from a public safety perspective, which that is my, in my, and always will be my number-one priority. And then the second is the residents that are impacted, because I represent the residents of the community. Yes, I recognize that a visual impact study will be done at the planning board level, but I also would like to understand what I'm putting forth, because then I'm pushing it one step closer to the viability of a situation. That's all.
Sure. Trying to, trying to draw perspective short of having that view shed, right?
Yeah.
So, perhaps I can help with that a little bit. So, you had asked a couple minutes ago about existing sites, trying to figure out, okay, what's this going to look like? And what do we have now? And how's it compared to what we already have?
Yeah.
Recall, again, the site on Rangeway, that's, you've been there a long, long time, 25-plus years. It's a lattice-style tower, we're proposing a monopole. Again, we're proposing 140-foot monopole. That tower, again, I believe, is 170, 180 feet tall.
Okay.
The Valhalla monopole, again, so similar style, we're proposing a bit taller. That's 100 feet tall at Valhalla. And that's been up since 2014, 15, right around there. Another test case for you guys locally, Poplar Ridge in Falmouth, just over the border. It's a very nice neighborhood.
Yeah.
For those of you who know it, that's a 300-foot guide tower that's been there for over 30, 40 years. Mountain Road in Falmouth. There's four or five towers, the tallest of which is almost 400 feet tall. The shortest of which is probably 180 feet tall on Mountain Road.
Okay.
Oh, the Yarmouth water tank, we call it Yarmouth 3 here. I think that's a hu, I think we're on to, I think that's 115-foot tall water tank. So not a tower, but just to give you that perspective of height.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, well, the Wyman Energy Plant, which is way outside our search ring, but that smokestack is north of 400.
Okay.
Yep.
So Andrew just pulled up a helpful diagram here, just for reference for the council. So, the one, the other cell tower. So, the one, the other cell tower on which road, Andrew? Range is 400 feet from their closest abutter, and this one's looking at 600 feet. So just for context, I think that's a helpful number to digest. Everyone?
It's about 440 or so.
Jeff, and then Bob. That was our order.
I thought it was Bob, then me.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Okay. So, I guess my, my question really isn't, you know, put the cellphone section in the one parking lots, go back to the public safety radios. If we wanna solve the problem that's facing our community right now, can we do it from any of these other sites in town? Or do you have to be up on that knoll at 14 Tuttle Road to solve that from a transmission standpoint?
The very shortest answer is there's not another way to do it. The, the slides that Norm showed gave you the look at what it would look like if we built a tower on Range Way and then used that tower and Shabig to create coverage. And it was still inferior coverage to the coverage we're gonna get with this tower at Tuttle Road and Route 88. And it may be helpful to know that when we were proposing and discussing and considering a tower, a new tower on Range Way, there were neighbors from over in that area of town that were upset, unhappy, didn't want a tower going up over there, and were approaching the town to have very similar conversations to what you're hearing tonight. So, I think, point being, wherever there's a tower located, there may be people that are not happy that it's there, but this is the only viable option that we've been offered to date.
And basically, you're partnering with somebody because the cost to build the tower on your own is probably millions of dollars?
We haven't specced one out lately, but we know the price of steel's going up. I mean, I've heard numbers getting kicked around that are probably between 700 and, 700,000 and a million. And then we would need to find the piece of land. So we would need to find a height of land that's town-owned to invest, you know, that million dollars to, 700,000 to a million dollars to build a tower.
Thank you.
It's helpful, Jeff. We had two towers earmarked in our TIF budget. Is, for as long as I've been on the council. I think it was $3 million in total that we had earmarked to solve this problem. Bob Vale, your turn, sir.
So, I don't care whether anybody's cell coverage gets better. It really isn't, that's, it's of little importance to me. Two things. I would propose a sidewalk. I think that there, it will be a little bit clearer to people when they, when they see the lot. The second thing is, this, this is a 20-acre, for the most part, it's a forested piece of land. It's not going to remain that way. It is going to be built out. And I think when we go down there and have a sidewalk, it's, it would be helpful to have a vision. And it might be helpful to have somebody from White Pine Church to accompany us on that and show us where the parking lots are going to be, where the church buildings are going to be, and what the build-out of that 20 acres looks like. The thing that I would ask the prospective developer, i.e. Verizon, is to put a balloon up. Where, in the center of where you, where you're gonna propose this tower to be. Let's see where it looks like and see how it affects the neighbors, where, where it's visual. We've done this in the past. FAA floated a balloon when they put the tower up on, on a piece of land on the, nights-
Matt's pond?
You know, above, on this piece of land up there that, coming north of Yarmouth Town Line. So, yeah. But anyways, I think that that would be helpful. You know, we can table this till we have a, a sidewalk, or we can approve it, subject to a, a sidewalk. But the, or we can spend millions of dollars and, and buy a piece of land and build a chief a new tower. But I don't think that, you know, being stewards of our town's money, that's gonna fly very far.
No, it won't.
Anyways, a, a analysis of what the build-out would look like, I think that's important for everybody to see, particularly people who are abutters. A balloon, so we can see the, the height of the tower. And let's go from there.
I would support that, Bob. I think that, I think everyone would feel, I think the reality is, is we are all living in a place where at some point in time, there's gonna be a cell tower, there's gonna be a highway exit, there's gonna be something or another. And I think, out of respect for the abutters and residents in town, I think it would be in our best interest to just make sure we do our due diligence to ensure the visibility is what it needs to be, or we feel comfortable with, so we at least know what we're signing off on, so. I'm not opposed to the cell tower. I think that's just, it's a natural evolution of where we're at. But I wanna make sure that we're crossing our Ts and dotting our Is to ensure that the residents aren't impacted in a way that's, that's really gonna impact their day-to-day life, so.
Other thoughts?
I guess, you know, I've put a lot of thought into this, and, you know, I think Bob hit the nail on the head with, put a balloon in the air, so we, we know what, we know what it looks like. But I, I will, when you look at the life safety aspect of a police officer or a firefighter in a burning building, that radio is all they have to keep them alive. And I gotta support that. That's, that's gonna support somebody's life. And I don't wanna hear about a firefighter that was trapped in a building, or a police officer that was shot during a routine traffic stop, and know that I could've somehow put a stop to it. So, I will support moving this forward.
Thanks, Jeff. Mike?
You know, I, I do, I do care about cell service. Anybody who wants to know what I'm doing daily? Drive by my house, 'cause I'm, I'm out my driveway, use my cellphone. I have no cell service in my house. I don't have the luxury of being in my house and calling 911. I've gotta go outside the garage. That's a real concern for me. And I'm a mile from this site. I know it doesn't get any better down Friar Lane. And I look at three of our neighbors in Friar Lane are down here, and their service is as bad as mine. But mine is absolutely horrible. So, yeah, I care about it. I care about it for my family's safety. And I care about my public safety officials too. And I haven't worked out on 295, I can tell you. Cell service is horrible. You drop calls left and right out there. So I think this is the bigger picture. And I'm in favor of moving this along.
Denise?
I'm also leaning in that direction. The public safety issue is a huge issue. You saw the maps on the coverage. It's crap now in a lot of places, and there are like actual lives at risk in emergency situations, and this would completely remedy that. The entire area opens up. It's, and I've considered everything, I've looked at everything, I've asked my questions, I've done my own research in the, you know, week leading up to this. I know we all do our own research. There are lots of biased sources out there. There are a lot of corporate-sponsored studies out there. I purposefully do not read those. Everything's peer-reviewed from academic journals, which is the least I could do. But, yeah, I mean, float a balloon if it helps adjust expectations and give people a preview of what it would look like. But I am in favor of moving forward this tonight. I don't think we need to table it.
Andy?
Are we just going down the-
Anyone who wants to share?
I'm just deciding, who wants to share.
You know, someone that's not the vice chair anymore.
I know.
I'm, I'm leaning heavily towards where, you know, Denise and Mike are on this with the, the cell coverage aspect of it, especially of the other side of the public safety bit, where if I need the police, if I need the fire, I need the cellphone. I need the ability to reach them so they can then come out and reach us and, you know, help, help me, help my neighbors, or anything like that. And then, on their side, communicate and be safe doing it. And 88 is horrible for, for cell coverage. And if you can't reach the fire department, they're, you know, it's useless. So, if we need to send a balloon up to take a look, to figure out exactly, you know, what it's gonna look like, I'm okay with that, but I, I'm not sure that we need to, to do that at this stage.
I'll share where I am, which is, I mean, I'm in agreement. I, I understand the visuals and how that can be upsetting and not something that you want when you look out your window. But at the same time, you know, we kicked off tonight's meeting giving an award to an officer who was able to answer a 911 call to a man who was choking and performed the Heimlich maneuver within two minutes. And it's like, oh, we're lucky that he had cellphone coverage when he made that 911 call. And for me, it's, it comes down to human life. And that's, it's a tough decision for me, but it's one that sits well with, I think, my integrity and what I think our job is, which is to ultimately make decisions that are saving lives within the people, within our community, the entire community. That's where I, yeah. Yeah, Dan, go ahead, please.
Just wanna make it super clear. Number one, you guys can have your job. It's very difficult. For us, like Chip said, I've been chief for 26 years. There's been changing, changes to narrowbanding of the radios, which cuts the signal strength in half, and P25 compliances, all this stuff. But we have truly, truly, just want you guys to know, we have spent a lot of time with Norm and everybody else trying to find those spots, right? It's not just one place that we put it up and say, there we go. We are doing that due diligence, trying to make sure we do all the studies to have a minimal number of towers, but also make sure that there is the coverage, whether it's for the police department or the fire and EMS staff. We've got alternate channels that we try to use, but it is extremely second, secondary to that safety part of it. And Chip's video at the beginning really shows that's what we're dealing with all the time. I don't think that did it justice about how really bad it actually is. But I just wanted you guys to know, we are working so hard to try to make sure that we're not missing anything. We've been doing this for a long time, using it before Shabig seceded, trying to use information from Shabig's side, the scrubbing of signal going across the water. We got a grant to put a repeater system. One was at the Forside Fire Station in Falmouth. The jagged coastline didn't work, all the different elevation. So, it, I just, again, wanna stress that, that there is all the effort from public safety trying to make any of these pieces work. And this is one of the last ones we have to be able to shoot the different direction. So, know that we're trying.
Thanks, Chief. There, unless there's any other council dialogue? Is there a motion, or?
My God, are you guys gonna make me do all the work tonight? Do it, I'm just trying to find my paper. You got it?
Yeah.
So, item number 25-079. I move an amendment, Chapter 315 zoning, Section 28.6, Public Safety Telecommunications Overlay District of the Cumberland Code of Ordinance, to include the parcel at 14 Tuttle Road, tax assessor map, R01/Lot 03, as recommended by the planning board.
A second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Okay, call for a vote, all those in favor? Motion passes. Okay. We are then moving on to 25-080, to hold a public hearing to consider and act on an amendment to the official over, official zoning overlay map of the town of Cumberland to add a new public safety telecommunications overlay district at 14 Tuttle Road, tax assessor map, R01/Lot 03, as recommended by the planning board. Mr. Manager, keep me honest here. So, since that, our last motion has passed, we now have to hold a public hearing to update the map for the town records, for the official town overlay district records?
You are correct, Madam Chair. The, your zoning maps need to be in alignment with your zoning language, and that's why one follows the other.
Great. This is a public hearing, which I will open, officially open up now if anyone would like to come talk about this particular agenda item. Please? Yeah, no, of course.
Just a couple of summary thoughts here. When the chief said, "No Verizon, no tower," or "No tower, they're not gonna get their signal." I was confused by that because the town can put up a tower. And we heard a talk today that the town spends a lot of money on a lot of different things. One month ago, the chief said the cost of the towers can be 500,000, possibly 700. I guess we should check the notes. I, I don't wanna say something that wasn't true. But all of a sudden, in one month, we have a lot of inflation. Maybe some serious consideration should be, instead of guessing, that maybe we ask Norm, you know? Maybe he can dig and find out costs. And what is really the cost to the town? And how does that all fit in? I heard something about a $3 million TIF. I mean, there are options here. So I wanted to bring up that. I also wanna mention, I, I, oof, there was some talk that you can't deny a cellphone tower based on health reasons. Is that an oxymoron? You can't deny a cellphone tower based on health. The FCC regulations that came up with this, 29 years old. I think we've seen a lot of development in the last 29 years. Maybe that should be revisited somehow. Health is a big concern to people these days. We just went through five years of health concerns. Isn't anyone considering that? Health is a very important thing. And I think we need to, we owe the chiefs, fire department, police department, you know, let's find something that works. Again, I mentioned the water tower over on, it was a Fair Ridge Road or Fair Lane Road that's owned by the Public Works, that we heard Verizon approached them. What if the town approached them, that, that condo association? And let them know about, hey, we have a real public safety concern here. There's no doubt about it. We honored an officer tonight for his ability to respond quickly. Wow, it makes you proud. But we're kinda, this cost benefit, let's, let's do our due diligence. I also heard about a balloon. I also heard about a balloon. Hey, let's enter the twenty-first century here. If you're gonna put something up, put up a drone. A balloon? You gotta run around town to see. You put up a drone, you can do it with a camera on it. You can do a three-hundred-and-sixty-degree view, and you can see just exactly who can see that tower. It's a very quick thing. We got the GPS coordinates of where the tower is gonna go. I'm sure we could just get a drone and go up there, and we'll get our visual. And, and forth here, just more on this sat phone stuff. Apple is offering free service for two years right now that you can have satellite access on iPhone fourteen and later model. And I mentioned earlier, Amazon's investing billions of dollars. Amazon, people ordering goods. People order goods inside their homes. They don't go out in their yard and order something from Amazon. Amazon knows something. Things are going in a direction here. And I just think it would behoove everybody if we just take a little more time and look at this. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak as part of the public hearing? Come on up.
I did want to mention that an alternative site was mentioned that was more rural. And I believe the chief mentioned that people also complained too. And I was, I spent a lot of time being a planner. And I worked with under-scarving planning and the state planners in terms of looking out for the greater good. And sometimes it was the greater good of how many the cost, et cetera. And the population density in this area is far more significant than the site that had maybe not optimal coverage, but had good coverage. And so the question is, with the population density, do you really want to? You talked about the safety of your families and that health could not be a decision-maker in banning. I'm not a lawyer. I don't have the expertise. But I've done a little reading and sitting. And you have immense flexibility in terms of setbacks, et cetera. Obviously, you are all for this. You made this eminently clear. And I understand taking care of EMS. But there are many alter, alternatives mentioned tonight and ways of going about it that are not maybe optimal at this exact moment, but could serve the greater good. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to come and speak? Final, final call? Any final speakers? Okay, then I'll close the public hearing, and we'll go to council questions, council discussion.
This is to update a map. And I support updating the map to reflect what we decided previously. Really have anything else to say other than that?
Thank you, Denise.
I would agree, Denise. This feels like a housekeeping item based on the prior decision that wouldn't change based on the prior decision. So I would provide a motion if people were interested or wanted to have more discussion, that's fine, too.
I'm, I'm good.
With a motion?
Yep.
Okay. Bob, Mike?
I have got it, Josh.
Okay. Mike?
Okay, sure.
I move to amend the official zoning overlay map of the town of Cumberland to add a new public safety telecommunications overlay district at fourteen Tuttle Road, tax assessor map R-01 slash lot zero-three, as recommended by the planning board.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Unanimous, Brenda. Thank you to everyone who came out and spoke so passionately tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We are moving on because we have four more public hearings to get through.
My turn to talk.
Twenty-five dash zero-eight-one, to hold a public hearing to consider and act on amendments to Chapter forty-eight Coastal Waters, Section two definitions, to add recreation platform, Section eight B, assignments and locations of moorings, and Section eight dash I, recreation platforms prohibited of the Cumberland Code of Ordinances, as recommended by the ordinance committee. I would like to punt to our new ordinance chair, Councilor Thorson. Give us.
Alrighty, so.
X.
Summary on this one. This item covers a few changes that are related to moorings. Basically, first, adding the definition of a recreational platform, which is a movable floating platform attached to a surface mooring and used for any purpose other than for anchoring, securing, or storage of watercraft. So think like, you know, a float where you get to hang out, or you know, any sort of platform that's not a watercraft. Second.
Or sell ice cream?
Yes. No, you also can't put the food truck on the platform attached to the mooring.
Wow, you really hamstringed me there.
Second, after defining what a recreational platform is, basically saying that you cannot have one attached to a mooring. So this was recommended, that we kind of close up this language, by Harbor Master Matt Merriman, who's awfully popular tonight. And basically, it was a public nuisance or safety issue concern. And Chief Remzi was at our meeting and agreed with that recommendation. Gave us a little more background on it. So basically, our, our language was likely already sufficient, but this leaves no room for misinterpreting attaching a float onto your mooring.
I support you.
I support you.
It wasn't my idea.
Take needs to do a public hearing.
Um, I, yeah, we, let's do our public hearing. So this is a public hearing. So if anyone would like to come up and make any comments, we would love to have you.
Stacy just wants to go to sleep.
There are four people out there. We'd love to have any one of you. All right. I will officially close the public hearing. Just a question, Councilor Thorson, or Chief Remzi, or Mr. Sturgis, or anyone who wants to weigh in at ten fifty-four at night. So what are, I know sometimes in Broad Cove, we have like big mooring, or sorry, big title changes, right? So what are the, what are the safety concerns exactly? I was just curious, more than anything else.
I think it, I mean, Chief Remzi can talk more about it, but I'm, well, looking at other towns who have ordinances like this as well, it's mostly like you have watercraft surrounding a float where people are chilling out. And, you know, they're inhaling carbon monoxide. They're falling off and getting sliced up by a propeller. Like just safety issues surrounding mixing craft with a recreational float. Maybe I'm just using my imagination too much, but.
I'll, I'll go with that, but the.
Like, what is happening out in the harbor? I'm so confused.
Nothing, that's the way we want to keep it.
Okay, all right.
The, our former harbor master, Detective Ben Burns, who some of you may know, he actually put this on my radar as a concern prior to him leaving and moving out to New York. And when Officer Merriman took over as harbor master, it was kind of just bubbling there as an issue we should address at some point in time. And then we did receive an inquiry by a Cumberland resident who wanted to attach a float to a mooring. And it brought back the conversation, you know, Ben was concerned about, could somebody put a tiny house out on a, you know, on a, on a float? And somehow then people be spending the night out on it? Does it become a party spot? Does it become, you know, one of these attractive nuisances that are causing public safety issues? And basically, the thought was our moorings are for mooring boats, and let's just make that clear. And as Councilor Thorson mentioned, our town attorney did believe that our, that our language in this ordinance was likely already sufficient to prohibit that. But he said, "If you want to make it crystal clear that this not happened, we will expressly prohibit that." And so that's what you have before you this evening.
I was just curious, because, or I don't know, we see, I see a lot in the mid-coast, you'll have a float attached to a mooring. And it's so that people can attach their dinghy to it as well. They can maybe have a, like, if they have a.
Traps.
More than one, or a paddleboard, or if they have, so is it also? I'm just trying to understand if it's about utile, like, in the person that actually wanted this, if it's because they wanted to put additional boats on their slot, they're on their mooring space? Or if it is, in fact, we're worried that children are gonna get run over? Because we don't have a ton of traffic, to your point, Chip, I think, in Broad Cove.
I think one of the major concerns was places like Georgetown that actually allow floating houses as rentals, you know, that has a part of a marina. So we don't have that, but we don't want to encourage the use of a floating house that, like the chief pointed out, opportunities for mayhem and misconduct and that sort of thing.
Yeah, we've seen a lot of, Bob, we never thought we'd see an Olympic-sized skating rink in somebody's backyard, so.
Do we have reason to believe the person wanted to put a floating house? Or is this just preemptive?
Preemptive.
Yeah, it's preemptive, quite frankly, make sure that you don't have some, an item that would, that'd be grandfathered because it wasn't defined. So since you have it defined and it's ahead of the curve, at least now it's, it's protective against something along those lines that could happen in the future, which has happened in other communities.
Okay.
Okay. Do we need to open for public comment?
No, I closed it.
Oh, closed, okay. I would give you a motion. Oh, go ahead.
I was gonna say, I was gonna try to share with you, Bailey, but I'll, I'll move to attend, to amend Chapter forty-eight Coastal Waters, Section two definitions, to add recreational platform, Section eight B, assignments and locations of moorings, and Section eight I, recreational platforms prohibited of the Cumberland Code of Ordinances, as recommended by the ordinance committee.
I'll give you a second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Call for a vote? All those in favor? All those opposed? All right, motion carries, six-one. All right. All right, next up, twenty-five dash zero-eight-two, to hold a public hearing and act on amendments to Chapter seventeen Animal Control, Section twelve, violations and penalties of the Cumberland Code of Ordinances, as recommended by the ordinance committee. Councilor Thorson?
This one's a bit of cleanup, and you'll see the second half of this down on item eighty-four. Basically, it's taking the fines and fees for animal control violations out of the Animal Control Ordinance chapter and putting it into Chapter eighty-four Fines and Fees instead. So now, you're not looking for the fines and fees there. They're just all in one place together. Just a copy paste job. And then it'll, there's a line there saying, you know, under the violations, see the fines and fees in Chapter eighty-four. And it'll redirect you to where now we'll live, should this pass.
Sensible to me.
Makes sense.
Oh, sorry, this is a public hearing. So if anyone would like to comment as part of this public hearing, I will officially open it. Would anyone like to come talk? I will officially close the public hearing. Any further council discussion?
I'm in support of this. It's good housekeeping. I'm happy to offer you a motion.
All right, let's do it. I'll do the next one.
My God, I'm so proud of you. Why is this not lining up? Section, oh, okay.
Zero-eight-two?
Zero-eight-two. I move to amend Chapter seventeen Animal Control, Section twelve, violations and penalties of the Cumberland Code of Ordinances, as recommended by the ordinance committee.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Unanimous, Brenda. Okay. Next up is twenty-five dash zero-eight-three, to hold a public hearing to consider and act on amendments, Chapter two twenty-three Shellfish Conservation, Section eight, Commercial and Recreational Licenses of the Cumberland Code of Ordinances, as recommended by the ordinance committee. Councilor Thorson?
Another one of Chief Remzi's ideas. Basically, the background is that there's some pretty intense language on logging all your shellfish harvesting activities, like throughout the year, as you do them, like very granular, which must be submitted to the town clerk every year on June thirtieth. However, this requirement has not been enforced in at least the last ten years, and it only captures half of the year's activities. And furthermore, we don't use the collected data for anything, if we did collect it. So the idea is just remove it. And basically, at the next Shellfish Commission meeting in the fall, they will discuss commercial digging requirements, if any. But just, you know, casual, non-commercial permit holders will not need to log their activities or submit them any longer.
Sounds like a nice service to the community of clam diggers.
If you can find them.
Okay, this is a public hearing. If there's anyone in the, in the audience that would like to comment on this particular agenda item? No, we will close the public hearing? Okay, any council discussion on this bad boy?
So my only question would be if, so the Shellfish Commission's meeting in the fall to look at sort of if we need to have any requirements, but they should be.
For commercial.
For commercial. And this looks like it redlines out just for the commercial logging and all that. Does it make sense to hold off on this and wait? And so we're just redoing the ordinance once? Because we have to, if we approve this, we're striking this. I guess we're already striking, we're already changing other things, we're already changing the ordinances. But I don't know if the cost per ordinance change is how many times we do it or how many parts of the ordinance we touch. You know, is it a sunk cost already? Since we're already changing the fees, moving those down? So like, the cost to change ordinance for this go-around is what it is? Or is it, you know, it's gonna cost X amount because of the fees, and then, you know, Y amount because of this one, and then Z amount because of the other one? You know, does it make sense to hold off all these changes until we have updates from the Shellfish Commission?
Chief, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but do you anticipate that there will be any changes from the Shellfish Commission?
I think that it's possible there won't. Our intention this fall is to discuss with the commission, you know, what is it that you would like to see? And then potentially, we would be inviting commercial diggers. There's exactly one commercial resident and one commercial non-resident to come to a Shellfish Commission meeting, to talk to the commission, to say, here they are, if you want to ask them any questions about their activities over the prior year, they're probably happy to, to share them with you. And so I think it's possible there won't be. To your question, Councilor McGoon, I don't know the cost side of things, but I do know that the cleanup on the animal control, and then the, the fines and fees, and then this one, these were born out of a conversation that I had with Jen, Town Clerk Jen Doten, who's very good about keeping these ordinances in order. She knows that we're gonna have a conversation with the Shellfish Commission in the fall, and it could go away of a future ordinance change. But if it does, I imagine that also wouldn't be super time-sensitive, and we could work it in the next time. There has to be something else going to the, is it called the reviser? That takes care of changing our, our code. So I don't know if I under or over answered you, but that's my shot.
So I think you'd be safe making the change. And then if you needed to in the future, we would bulk that in with everything else that we had going forward. As far as, as far as cost impact, it's, it'd be minimal in the overall scheme of everything else that's going forward.
It's not likely they're gonna start keeping a log now.
Yeah.
Two.
For two.
Two people.
So I think you might be safe.
All right.
Sounds reasonable. Thanks, Chief. Take a motion if there is one.
I can give you one. For twenty-five dash zero-eight-three, I move to amend Chapter two twenty-three Shellfish Conservation, Section eight Commercial and Recreational Licenses of the Cumberland Code of Ordinances, recommended by the ordinance committee.
I'll give you a second. I'll give you a second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Unanimous Brenda Moore, if you're still watching.
It's way past my bedtime.
Hope you're not Brenda.
I hope she's gone.
Me too. Way past my bedtime.
He will tell you tomorrow that I handicapped this evening and I was way off. But if she can watch it from home, she'd be fine.
You gotta be up in five hours with these kids, so.
I gotta be in Saratoga at eleven.
We got one more to do, so. Alright, last one, party people. Twenty-five dash zero eight-four to hold a public hearing to, uh, to consider an act on amendments to chapter eighty-four fees and fines, section five dog control, section ten library, section twelve moorings, and section thirty-two yard waste facility to the Cumberland Code of Ordinances as recommended by the ordinance committee. One more for us Denise.
This is a big pile of random, um, so, like I said before, the eighty-four fines and fees is moving the animal control stuff over, but it also changes the language from dog control to animal control. Then also the library overdue fees have all been redlined, um, so those are gone officially, no overdue fees. And non-resident borrowing has increased from thirty dollars to sixty-five annually for those not of Cumberland or North Yarmouth. Additionally, um, more talk about moorings. Um, this is specifically talking about, um, something that was recommended by the Coastal Waters Commission during their March twenty-fifth meeting. It increases the late renewal application fees from fifty to a hundred dollars because there is a massive amount of late permits annually that come in just late all the time. So, hoping to deter that many late submissions with a three-digit number over a two-digit number. Hopefully people will put their things in on time. Additionally, some modest increases to fines and fees and moorings, um, to keep pace with what they should be between like two dollar and thirty dollar increases depending on the item. Finally, um, the annual brush dump pass, this would, effective January first of next year, um, seniors sixty-five and up will receive those passes for free.
Love that. That's awesome. I think our town manager was going to chime in with something.
I had one item, apologies councillor Thorson, uh, uh, library director Mazur and I spoke today and she had one other request.
Oh.
And she was asking if, if in this altering of the fees and fines, if you could drop A and B as well, which was photocopies at ten cents a page and outgoing fax at fifty cents per page. Uh, she felt that they're, they don't have that much volume, but at the same time handing a lot, handling a lot of dimes and she felt it was just kind of, it wasn't really productive use of staff time or wasn't really a giant revenue item for them. But it does provide a resource for folks, so they do come and use that instead of having to have their own copiers at their house and expending on toner, it's a nice service at the library. So that was her one other request, that we, that the council would drop those, drop both A and B as well, but keeping, uh, so C would net, would then become A and it would just be sixty-five dollars per year.
That's pretty significant revenue.
Those late fees though taught me responsibility when I was a kid.
Yeah.
How long have those not been enforced now?
They were enforced in nineteen eighty-five.
Yeah.
So we're, so we're like ten cents a page copies.
I'm a little concerned that you're acutely aware of the year that you had fee enforcement.
This is truly been traumatizing for him.
It's probably been a good ten to fifteen years that, uh, they haven't enforced. The library is, you know, they convinced me a long time ago when I was a young council member in Gray that they were counterproductive, because oftentimes people would look at the cost of the book that they, uh, versus what they had for overdue fines and when it got to be a lot more expensive than the book, they just kept the book and you never saw it again.
Right.
So.
I'd be so sad not to go to the library again.
Yeah.
Okay.
Gotta, gotta pay sixty-five dollars and come to the Cumberland library.
My stocks are going up.
So fifty, fifty cents? Fifty cent?
Yeah.
Fifty cent what? Per page? Zero per page.
Upgoing faxes fifty per, per page, but now.
Right now, but then it'll be nothing.
Yeah, be zero and, and then no charge for copies.
Got it.
So it'd be scratching A and B and then we'd change the non-resident borrowing to A at sixty-five per year.
You're just giving it all away.
Yeah. It's consistent with what the council said.
This is, this is when it began. The downfall of the whole town started when we stopped charging fifty cents for faxes. Remember this day. I'm just kidding. It's eleven, eleven, eleven.
Make a wish.
Eleven eleven?
Yeah.
Jesus Christ. Thank you.
Hey Madam Chair, there's also staff support as well, uh, for the idea of the free, or the no charge brush dump fee for the year, thought it was a great opportunity for, for the seniors in the town, so.
I think that's a wonderful thing.
Annually, so it's not a lifetime, lifetime appointment.
Right. Excellent. Um, uh, if our Chair of the ordinance is comfortable with those last minute adjustments, I would entertain a motion.
From someone? Denise?
What?
Can you make the motion?
Oh. Sure. I move to amend chapter eighty-four fines and fees, section five dog control, section ten library, section twelve moorings, and section thirty-two yard waste facility of the Cumberland Code of Ordinances as recommended by the ordinance committee.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion?
Are we including the amended?
I just think that falls under library. Library?
Yes.
Yeah.
We got a thumbs up from the town manager, so. Alright, we'll call for a vote.
Where was the lady?
Do we have a public hearing?
No.
I'm so sorry. Uh, oh, yes, uh, okay. Are you sure Stacy? Are you sure? We'd love to have you, it's only eleven to thirteen. Okay, alright, we will, we have offici, what was that? No, come on up Stacy!
There's some seltzer in there.
Okay, um, uh, public hearing is closed. Um, there, I don't think we have to redo the.
You're good.
We're good, okay, call for a vote, all those in favor? Alright, unanimous Brenda, thank you very, very much. Um, alright, um, new business, uh, we'll start all the way to the right with Mr. Mahalik. What you got for us?
I have none tonight.
Okay. Thank you sir. Councillor Thorson?
I don't really have anything except thanks for everyone who came out tonight to talk to us, even though I didn't agree with you a hundred percent on everything. I appreciate your time. Appreciate you.
Beautifully said. Councillor Vale?
It's too late to have any thoughts other than going to bed.
Okay. Councillor Douglas?
Um, we have scheduled all the finance meetings for the year. First one is September eighth at five PM, December eighth at five PM, March ninth at five PM, May eleventh at five PM, and June eighth at five PM. And then, just a gentle reminder that Wander is now open again, so go spend your money there.
Love it. Councillor Magoon?
Uh, so I have two hopefully quick things, um, just an update on the rec committee side of things. Pete Bingham recently met with, uh, school about the Greeley roadside at Twinbrook and the, sounds like the school board voted unanimously to go ahead with a design concept for potentially adding ball fields to the Greeley roadside in the area that they have. Uh, and then on Wednesday, July sixteenth, so in what, like?
Tomorrow.
Almost tomorrow, um, will be the annual community picnic at Twinbrook from five to eight at Tweeds Brook or Tweds Brook. Um, I like Tweeds Brook.
Where your tweed.
Exactly.
There you go. I thought it was changed. I don't think it's called Tweds Brook anymore.
It's called the community picnic now.
It said dash, dash Tweds Brook somewhere in the thing. Um, live music, bounce house, food trucks, hopefully good weather. So, that's it.
Councillor Eads?
Uh, just a couple of short things. Tonight was a tough vote and I know you guys don't take it lightly and that's what I appreciate about all of you. I mean, it's, anytime you've got a neighborhood with that kind of concern, um, I'm glad we took our time tonight, I really do. I think you guys, the whole council did a good job and it was a tough decision and it is what it is. Finally, um, I just want to say thank you to the citizens of Cumberland. Um, I wasn't here the last meeting, but, um, I appreciate your vote confidence and the emails and letters of, um, support and asking, you know, if I'd run and all that. I, I don't take it lightly. Um, this community is very, very near and dear to my heart and, um, I, I really appreciate your, your vote of confidence. I, um, nobody, nobody was happier to see the signs go down than Bob and I were, to rip those things up and take them down for another year. My sister drove through Cumberland, I don't know, must've been April. She says, I didn't know you were interested in running for town council. Where you been the last twelve years? But, um, anyways, thank you and thank you to members of the council tonight, appreciate it. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Alright, I know everyone wants to go home, but I walked in and I found this and we all have an extra minute for Ronnie Cop. So, twenty minutes to Ron Cop for the food pantry. Ron, I sincerely hope you are not watching right now. Um, and I hope that you have better cell phone service on two ninety-five, uh, when you are inevitably there, um, saving a, a car.
Dig, before you adjourn, I'm gonna match Ron's.
Oh my god. My roller's over here. All we need is Ron's friend Dean and then we're gonna be up to sixty.
I'll pick up the tradition from the west end going forward.
Nice, love it. Do I give this to you mister?
Yes ma'am.
Alright, uh, is there a motion to adjourn?
Please.
Alright, uh, oh, call, oh, all those in favor? Unanimous Brenda Moore. Thank you all. Uh, Matt, I need to sign these.